I'd like to call the January 27, 2015 Longmont City Council meeting to order. This is a regular session. Could we please start with our roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs?
Here.
Council members Bagley?
He's checking for lost keys in his car.
Okay.
For lost keys in his car.
Council members Christensen?
Here.
Finley?
Here.
Levison?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
And Santos?
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have our form.
Okay, let's stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their names on the list will have the opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening, or at final call, public invited to be heard on any of the items at the end of the meeting. So there's no minutes to prove tonight. Valerie, are there any agenda revisions?
Yes, Mayor Coombs, we have one addition to the agenda and one corrected item. So we are adding item nine out to consent. It's to designate the bulletin boards for council posting locations. And I'll read that in, that item in when we get to the consent agenda. The second one, there was a revised ordinance, O 2015-06, placed at your desks tonight. That's for item 8A on second reading. And I'm going to just let you know what the correction is because it was a correction of a typo, page one, line 12. It what, that amount is, the corrected amount is 250,000. It did say 61,610. It was a typo on the first, on first reading.
It's a report from the city manager?
No report, Mayor Council.
All right, so I guess it's time for the special reports and...
Our first item is presentation, the fourth quarter report from the Longmont Area Economic Council. And we're going to start the presentation with Dave Hummerk, Huma neck, I'm sorry, Chairman of the Board.
I said, "Good evening, Mayor, Council members." Tonight, we're going to do our fourth quarter report for 2014 and really talk about some of the year-end data that we collected for the year. But before that, I just wanted to take a few minutes to talk about the overall year and our outlook going forward. You know, and also probably the most important part is I've got a couple of new members of our organization I'd like to introduce tonight as well. But 2014 was really a transformational year, I think, for our organization, and frankly, for our community and economic development. You know, the targeted industry analysis that, that this body approved and LAEC helped fund really morphed into a great, all-inclusive plan called Advanced Longmont. And what was really fascinating and interesting to me is how all our economic development partners in 2014 really came together to make that happen. And in 2015, well, let me just say, the other thing that was really impressive is really the community leadership with people like Harold and Andy Bade and Sean and Wendy that really made this almost effortless way to bring these folks together. I'm not sure other cities have that kind of relationship with all the different economic development partners. Now, for 2015, I think our, the real focus is execution and gaining momentum. And for our board, you know, the first thing that we really needed to do is to get strong leadership and also enhance our capabilities so we can take on the new responsibilities that our mission has. So the first thing I'd like to do is introduce our new small business director. Her, her name is Janine Lettingham, did I get that right? Yeah. She started on Monday, and she's hit the ground running, so Janine?
Good evening, and I just want to thank you all for the opportunity. I'm really looking forward to working with the Longmont Area Economic Council and continuing to work with the small businesses of Longmont. I've been working with them for a while through the LEGI program and through the Small Business Development Center. So I'll be seeing lots of everyone.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, I was part of the interview team. I have to tell you, I tried to drill deep. She knows way more about economic development in our programs than I'll ever know. It's really great to have experts in here that can really run with it. And speaking of which, I'd like to introduce somebody that we've been waiting to meet for quite some time. She comes from the Colorado Office of Economic Development and International Trade. And, you know, the Board of Directors for LAEC was just so impressed with her experience, her energy, and her passion for economic development. She's just the perfect fit to lead our organization. So this, Jessica Erickson is our new president.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Mayor Coombs and City Council. I just want to say that I'm thrilled at the opportunity to be a part of this community, and even more so to serve the LAEC and the community as a champion really for economic development here in the role as President and CEO of the Longmont Area Economic Council. I want to express my gratitude to Dave Huma neck, the Board of Directors, and especially Wendy Nafsteger, who's amazing. I've known her for my entire economic development career, and I'm very excited about the prospect of working with her, really for maintaining an active and effective organization without someone in the president role and gaining the momentum that they have within the community in support of economic development here. And also to commend you all, city leaders, city council, the city staff, for your commitment to economic development, your investment in economic development in the community. I'm really looking forward to working with each and every one of you, and I'm sure I'll be seeing you all frequently, and I'm happy to ask, answer any questions that you have of me.
Well, first off, welcome.
Thank you. I do belong in Longmont. Very true.
Very simple.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, Jessica just mentioned speaking of the welcome. She just found a place in Longmont, so she's moving up here in a couple of weeks too, so that's, that's fantastic.
Awesome. Well, we're all excited, the whole council and the whole city's excited that she's here, and we finally got that position filled.
Absolutely. Now, you have to be nice to her. She doesn't start till the 17th.
Okay.
So after that, you can do what you like. The, the other person that I'd like to mention is our, our former vice president, current interim president, and next vice president, Wendy Nafsteger. She's really was the glue that held us together and got so much done. You know, I mentioned that 2014 was transformational, but we still got a lot done while we were, we're pulling all this together. And I really hand it to Wendy, and really the partnership that she formed with Sean Lewis, too. You guys just worked your butts off for, for the whole year, and you're going to see some pretty positive results, I think, with the data we show. And that's really largely from the leadership and the work that these guys have done. So anyway, Wendy, come on down.
Mayor Coombs, Mayor Council members? I'm going to present our fourth quarter report for the Economic Council for the last time. No one's more excited about Janine and Jessica than I am. All right, so I'm going to see if I can figure out how to do this. I think I'll just use this. So, uh, get the right keyboard. Does it come out? Okay. There we go. So the highlights, these are just what I'm going to go over really quick, but the highlights of our fourth quarter report are positive job growth, increased prospect activity leads, advanced Longmont has been established as a community-wide economic development plan. And I want to just say a few words about this because I've been in Longmont almost my entire life. I've been with the Economic Council more than half of that entire life. And this is the first time that I have seen this community, and not, not just the city, not just the Economic Council, but all of our partners, really rally around a community-wide economic development plan. Every time I go somewhere, someone's talking about, "Well, that's part of what we're doing in the economic development plan, and, and that's in the implementation plan." And people are really charged about this, and it's really exciting. And thanks to your leadership and city staff and our Board of Directors, I think that's the leadership of all of you and them are, is very key to why this is so charged, and it's, it's really exciting. Also, we have, we have seen increased entrepreneurial activity, obviously. With short staff, we weren't able to lead that or anything, but fortunately, we haven't had to because we have Tinker Mill and Launch Longmont and Public Safety Ventures and whatever else is going to come out. I mean, it's just amazing how this community is being seen right now. Every time I open the paper, there's something about Startup Longmont, or Tinker Mill, or Launch Longmont. So we are supporting that organization monetarily as well as through partnerships as well and referrals, so we're excited about that as well. Sorry to say as well so much. So, our primary employer prospect activity. I'm just not very good at this. So for 2014, we had a net job gain of 325 jobs. That's primary jobs. That's what we track in our office right now. Considering some of the announcements that we've had lately, and of course, we haven't seen the full Amgen or anything like that yet, but 325 is awesome. That's a 2.7 increase over 2013. We had 14 new companies, and only seven that relocated or closed, which is, which is a lower number than when 2013 as well. Most of those expansions came from our existing companies. 60 companies expanded here in Longmont, and 67 companies cut back, which is just natural. What I want to say about the companies that are expanding in Longmont, with the partnership that Sean and I and Harold and Dave and, and everyone have, we are seeing very high increase in activity from existing companies looking to do things in Longmont. And that says a lot for Longmont because they're ready to stay here, they're ready to grow here. They know that working in Longmont and working with city staff is a, an easier process than maybe somewhere else. We're happy to have them here and growing. So for prospect results, and a prospect is anyone that contacts our office that's looking to move their company here. Could be through the Metro Denver Economic Development, through Jessica's former office at the State, brokers, Companies Direct. We had 23 prospects that, I was, I'm sorry, I had to catch up with what slide I'm on. So this is prospect results. What this is representing is of the prospects that did something, that we knew did something. A lot of prospects kind of go to a black hole, and you have no idea why they did or didn't do anything anywhere. But of the ones that we knew in 2014, 23 completed or closed, they did something. 15 of those did nothing. So 65% of the, of the prospects that we were working with did nothing. No project happened anywhere for a variety of reasons, obviously. However, Longmont closed on three of the eight that did something. Compared to the other places, Boulder, Louisville, Weld County, Windsor, and out of state, obviously we had a higher closure rate than the other communities. So I think we're doing pretty good. So in 2014, we had 52 leads. And so a lead, that's where I was going with the last slide, I messed that up, but, so we had 52 leads, which means 52 different companies contacted our office in one way or another to find out about space or opportunities for expansion or relocation into our community. That was an increase over 2013 where we had 48. And believe me, with a short staff, that was a lot of work, but fortunately, I had Sean. So Sean really stepped it up and helped me a lot with prospects this year. We were able to work together on a lot of those, and that, that really helped me personally to be able to service the people that were looking at this community. 19 in-person prospect visits. That number's pretty dramatic because I can remember the days, not very long ago, when we, number one, had no idea who the prospects were, which we still have some of those, I wouldn't say majority, about half, we still don't know who they are because of confidentiality or whatever. But 19 in-person prospect visits, that's pretty good. And that's people physically coming to Longmont to talk to us, so that's great exposure. 14 of those included said city representatives. Every time, with the exception of the people that are in Niwot, because obviously that's not in the city, every time that we meet with a prospect, Harold and Sean and David Starnes are invited as staff members so that they can represent the city at those meetings. That just, that historically hasn't happened, and I find that that is incredibly powerful when we're in front of the prospects. So primary employer contact, these are existing industries. As you know, we have a world, not world, we have a nationally-known volunteer committee of 25 people that go out and do these surveys for us with a, with a small staff. We obviously can't contact 200 employers on our own. In the 25 years, I think, that they, we've had this committee, we've never had a breach of confidentiality, we've never had an issue. And like I said, I have, I am recognized by my peers all over the country who say, "You have volunteers to do that stuff for you?" And we do, and it's awesome. They completed 134 surveys this year out of 200 employers, which is, I think it's about a 64% rate, so it's, they continue to amaze me and really help our office. 52 of primary employer meetings by our staff, of which city staff attended 38 of them. Those are, those are random, those are, include if they're looking to expand, or if they're looking for services, or they're looking for information. So we per, we go to the primary employers, and we set up meetings with them so that we can make sure we're in the community, letting the existing employers know that we're here, what we offer. And that's also another great reason when Sean or David come with me, because then we can talk about what else is being offered through the city and further exemplify our partnership, working together. We had four city leadership meetings this year, and this is brand-new in 2014. We haven't done this before, and it's actually part of our contract going forward in 2015. So what these are, are there, we have, hmm, I don't even know, probably about 20 employers in town that have 80 or more employees. So those are our top employers, and we are, we are set to meet with every one of those as a city leadership team this year. The mayor, Harold, Sean, myself, and Dave Huma neck as Chairman of the Board go on those city leadership meetings. And again, this is kind of a follow-up to our digital globe. This is a, "Let's get out there, let's make sure these people know we, that we know they're important, we want them here, how can we assist you?" So that just started, and again, is a little bit tough with a short staff, but we got four of them done last year, and we will be meeting with all of them this year at least once. We're going to try to attempt to do that twice. Okay, so as part of our Advanced Longmont, we do have an implementation plan. And out of that, Andy Bade, who is our past Chairman of the Board, Sean and myself worked on some metrics to start, start tracking things in, in the business climate as well as the things that I already put forth to you. The, the reason that I don't have graphs or information on this right now is Q4 is hard to report on in, in January because a lot of information isn't out yet. So we're going to start rolling that out, I haven't asked Jessica this yet, but we're going to start rolling that out at the next quarter of the report because we'll have some real measurements that we can start tracking. There's not a lot to start with yet with just Q3 and Q4 when we started that information, so that will be forthcoming. Small business activity, obviously, we haven't had a lot of that in the last quarter because of obvious reasons. However, we have hired Janine, as you know, and she, literally, she started yesterday, and she's been hitting meetings ever since. Plus, before she started, don't tell Sharon, but she was already out representing us at meetings before she even started here. So Janine is amazingly awesome. We do have a... We do have a website that has a small business page that has all the information that we're transitioning over from the city. And I want to thank Joni and Erin at the city because without them, we would have never got all this done, and Jean Madrid as well. So we're transferring everything over to the Economic Council. We're making sure everything goes to us right now. And now they have, people have a voice they can speak to, and they can call and talk to Janine about this. So obviously, we'll be reporting on this metric as well as we move forward with full Just a little bit on some website, social, print media stuff, just for exposure through the Economic Council. Web traffic, 5,887 visitors, 168 social media postings, followers, we have 949 for the Economic Council, and then 954 search engine referrals, and 51 positive media mentions. And I want to just let you know that the positive media mentions, those is higher than that. The reason is, we just started kind of tracking this. And so every time a story runs in The Times Call, and then in Biz West, we just count that as one story, although it's being mentioned in two places. So we will revise that so that's a better reflected number as we move forward as well. That's what I have, unless anyone has any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Would it be possible to...did you have some type of that, or some type of written information on Advanced Longmont?
I have more information on Advanced Longmont than you could ever want. Yes.
I would request that you just send it to council.
Okay. Council has received it, but I will send it again.
I didn't...I mean, I'm sure I got it.
And would it be okay if I send that as a link to council? Because it's a very large document.
No, no, I want hard copy.
I have it in hard copy, and I have it on CD.
The link would be fine.
There you go. Councilman Moore has one for you. But I will make sure and get the link to everyone so you can see that. And the economic partners meet every month, and we just met this morning, actually. And so we go through the implementation plan, make sure we're updating it, changing it as we need to. It's just rocking and rolling, and we're just getting started.
Councilmember Finlay.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Wendy, I just want to also thank you for your service during this time when we have been leaderless. But we haven't been leaderless because we had you. And because we had you, we were able to get through this and do...you did a fantastic job, and I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
Your next time of business is the Customer Satisfaction Survey presentation of the results, and I believe Rego Leal is going to introduce this.
This is a rare treat. It's a rare treat. Getting up from the back of the truck. Right.
My name is Rego Leal. I'm the city's Public Information Officer, and I'm here to present the results of three different surveys that we've taken over the last several months and a year or so. Every couple of years, I get to come up and present the results to you from the National Research Center, the contractor that we use to help us conduct this survey. This year, we're going to do something a little different. In addition to hearing from the National Research Center, we're also going to hear from Eric Hozempa, who's the Executive Director of the Longmont Foundation, who recently conducted a survey as well. And we'll also hear from Mike Butler, the Public Safety Chief, who will present some results from a similar survey that he did in 2013. So it'll give you a little bit more rounded information, I think. Even though the surveys roughly are similar in terms of tone and results, you'll be able to see a lot of differences as well. So with that, I'm going to introduce Chelsea Farson. She's here to my left. She is from the National Research Center, who conducted the survey on behalf of the city. And she's going to highlight some of the results from you from the National Research Center survey. And then you're certainly free to ask her questions along the way. And then we'll transition over to Eric, and then we'll hear from Mike after that. So I'll turn it over to Chelsea.
Well, thank you, Rego, and thank you, Mayor Coombs, and members of council for your time this evening. As Rego said, my name is Chelsea Farson, and I am a project manager at National Research Center. And I'm excited to be here this evening to present the results of the 2014 Longmont Customer Satisfaction Survey. And before I get started, I'd just like to say a quick thank you to Rego for all his help in the process. It certainly couldn't have been done without him, and he made my job a whole lot easier. So, thank you, Rego. First, I'd like to just kind of say that, a background about surveys like this. This is a general citizen survey. They're a window into your performance. They're typically perception surveys. They're opinions that residents have about service delivery, quality of life, policy things going on, their opinions about those things. So they also allow you to hear from a different voice in the community, not just those that attend meetings or convey their opinions to you by other means. Survey results can be used to monitor trends in resident opinion, measure government performance, inform budget and strategic planning decisions, as well as benchmark service ratings. A little background on this survey, the 2014 survey was the 15th survey administration since 1996. These surveys serve as a report card, as I mentioned, for things like quality of life, community amenities, local government performance, service quality, and community priorities. In addition to being able to compare the survey results over time, we also provided comparisons by Ward of Residency. And we also have a set of comparisons on different socio-demographic characteristics, including age and gender, and a couple additional ones as well. All of these comparisons can be found in the full report of results. What we'll do today is just go through kind of a brief summary of the key highlights and findings that I found through the analysis and reporting of the data. The 2014 survey included a set of three mailings to 3,000 households. These households were randomly selected, and the mailings began in September of 2014. We had 746 completed surveys, giving us a response rate of 26%. The overall margin of error around the 746 responses is plus or minus 4%. Respondents also had the opportunity to complete the survey online, as well as in Spanish online and by mail upon request. We've weighted the data so that it is more representative of the population of Longmont as a whole, instead of just those that responded to the survey. And we also have the opportunity to provide comparisons to communities across the nation, as well as just in the Front Range. So those are highlighted at some points throughout this presentation, but all of those comparisons can be found in the full report of results as well. As I mentioned, we're going to just touch on the highlights of the survey findings. We've outlined six different key findings. And again, I'd just like to mention, as we look through these, we're looking at opinions that residents have, their perception of services, quality of life, those types of things. So it's not always a reflection on how well is this service being provided, those types of things. It can also be a combination of that and different types of communication that are impacting how residents view what's going on in their community. So the first key finding that we found was that residents continued to enjoy a high quality of life in Longmont. Oh, excuse me, oops, lost that one there. The overall quality of life in Longmont has remained strong since when this question was first asked in 1996. I've only showed some of the comparison numbers here. But it is a strong rating that's similar to past years, and also similar to communities across the nation and in the Front Range. Residents were asked to rate a variety of aspects of quality of life. About 8 in 10 gave positive ratings to Longmont as a place to live, as a place to raise children, and their neighborhood as a place to live. 6 in 10 gave positive ratings for Longmont as a place to retire, and 5 in 10 gave positive ratings for Longmont as a place to work. You can see here that all of these ratings were similar to the nation, as well as the When asked how likely or unlikely they would be to remain in Longmont for the next five years, and to recommend living in Longmont to someone else, most residents said they were likely to do each of these things. You can see that this rating, the ratings in 2014 were similar to those in past years, and also similar to the nation and Front Range benchmark comparisons. The second key finding that I found with the results were that residents value community characteristics, with gains for some community amenities and room for improvement in others. Of the 23 community characteristics listed on the survey, 16 were rated as excellent or good by at least half of respondents. The most positively rated characteristics were air quality, recreational opportunities, as well as cultural activities. Some of the lowest-rated items out of that list of 23 were affordable quality housing, job opportunities, and shopping opportunities. In general, of the 23 that were listed on the survey, most remained stable over time, and most were similar to the national and Front Range comparison. However, we do see a few that don't fit within that, and here, too, were below both sets of benchmark comparisons. Residents were asked to rate how important it was for Longmont to foster a strong sense of community. And here, we see that nine out of 10 Longmont residents feel that sense of community is at least somewhat important. And we also asked about the quality of Longmont's sense of community, and 7 in 10 said the quality of that was excellent or good. We also asked residents about their frequency of visiting their neighbors, and about three quarters of residents said that they visit with their neighbors at least several times a month. When asked to indicate how important it was for the city to make efforts to promote diversity in the community, residents gave high ratings for each of the four actions that we had listed on the survey, with at least 8 in 10 giving a somewhat important or higher rating to those four different ways to promote diversity in the community. The third key finding was that residents generally feel safe, but they do cite crime as a potential problem to address, as a perception that they have in the community. A list of 34 services were rated on the survey, and five of them were related to safety. Here, we see that about 9 in 10 gave a positive, excellent, or good rating to firefighting and rescue services. 8 in 10 gave a positive rating to emergency dispatch, emergency police services, and fire inspection and fire safety education. 5 in 10 gave a positive rating to crime prevention. Residents were asked to write in their own words what are the three biggest challenges that Longmont will have to face in the next five years. And one of those was crime, safety, and drugs, with about 1 in 5 residents citing or writing in a comment related to this topic area. And in addition to identifying challenges facing Longmont, residents were given a list of 15 specific problems, and asked to rate how much of a problem each were in the community. And crime was considered problematic by 61% of residents, giving a major or moderate problem rating for crime in the community. And again, I think it's important to note here that these are perceptions, and they're an opportunity to kind of dig a little bit deeper. So this general survey doesn't give us a lot of the whys, but it gives us kind of a perception that we can try to learn more about and dig a little bit deeper into what maybe is causing this perception. We also found that residents rated the quality of city services favorably, and most ratings, again, were similar to past years. We do see a lot of stability in the ratings for 2014 compared to 2012. Overall quality of city services has remained strong since this question was first asked in 1996. And the 2014 ratings, as you see here, were similar to the national and Front Range benchmarks. After this question, we also asked residents to write in their own words why they gave this rating, and 3 in 10 indicated or wrote in a response related to good, timely, reliable, and affordable service as the reason that they gave the rating that they did. And an additional 2 in 10 gave a rating that was related to the fact that they didn't encounter any problems with their contact with the city, and the overall quality of the services. So those are kind of two of the main categories of written-in responses that we were able to pull.
So that's not the grade?
Not the grade.
I crossed up my note, Harold.
Not the grade, yes. As I mentioned, the survey had 34 individual services listed, and 30 of those 34 were rated as excellent or good by at least half of respondents. The top-rated services include weekly trash pickup, firefighting and rescue services, library services, sewer services, and electric service, each of these with about 9 in 10 giving a positive rating. Among the lowest-rated services were long-range planning, development review, code enforcement, and timing of traffic signals. And typically here as well, when we were able to compare these over time to 2012 ratings, they were similar, and they were also typically similar to the national and Front Range comparison. So there are a few that don't fit that, but in general, we saw a lot of stability with the ratings. Excuse me. Survey respondents were also asked a series of questions about their contact with the city. 61% indicated that they had contacted the city in the last two years. And of those, the most common reasons that they had contacted the city were regarding utility billing, with about half indicating that as their department or service that they made contact about. And about a third indicated the recreation centers or police services. We also asked residents to rate a variety of aspects of their interaction with city employees, one of which being their overall impression. And about 8 in 10 gave a positive rating to their overall impression of their city employee in their most recent contact. This is a rating that was similar to the national benchmark and the Front Range as well, and similar to the response given in 2012. Survey results also indicate that while the economy continues to be a focus, ratings for Longmont as a place to work and employment opportunities improved. And again, with the question asking about the three biggest challenges, residents were given the opportunity to write in their responses. And about 22% indicated that jobs, economy, and cost of living would be a challenge for Longmont in the next five years. However, these items, this was less of a concern compared to transportation-related concerns, concerns about stores and restaurants, as well as concerns about growth and overpopulation. The survey included a question asking residents about their perception of different types of growth in the community, one of which being jobs growth. And about three quarters indicated that jobs growth was much or somewhat too slow. However, this is on par similar to what we see across the nation, as well as in the Front Range. One of these I had already touched on in a previous slide, but I thought it was important to bring up again, was that Longmont as a place to work was rated positively by half of respondents. And it is, excuse me, it is an increase since 2012. So that rating has improved, and it is similar to the national and Front Range benchmark. When rating employment opportunities, about a third gave a positive rating for this. This is similar to what we see across the nation and in the Front Range. And it is actually increased from 2012 back to the levels that we see in 2006, where 31% gave a positive rating for this item. So it's gone back to that higher rating that is similar to other communities in the nation and Front Range. Our final key finding is related to a new policy question on the survey, where we asked residents to indicate their level of support for potential approaches to preserve affordable rental housing. And what we found was that the support certainly varied by the two different approaches that we asked about. Here, you can see that we have about half indicating that they strongly or somewhat support voting for a dedicated sales tax increase, and fewer, about a third, indicate support for a dedicated property tax increase. Another important piece of this is those that strongly oppose. We see that about half strongly oppose voting for a dedicated property tax increase, and a third strongly oppose voting for a dedicated sales tax increase. So typically with these, while the percent positive, what we call is the strongly and somewhat support, typically that is an important way to look at it. But even more so are those that strongly are in support or opposition, because those are the ones that likely won't waver. Those that somewhat support or somewhat oppose are ones that you may have more room to impact their decision by potentially informing them better about the steps that may be taken. So that is the policy question that was added for 2014. And as we... And as we see here, there are definitely some different levels of support for each, and some strong opposition noted as well. A quick summary of the six key findings. Residents continue to enjoy a high quality of life. They value characteristics of the community. They generally feel safe, but cite crime as something that's a potential problem or area to address or put energy towards. Residents rated the quality of city services favorably. The economy will continue to be a focus, but ratings for Longmont as a place to work and employment opportunities have improved over time, and the support for potential approaches to preserve the affordable rental housing certainly varied. And I believe that's all I have for you. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time as well.
Councilmember Levison?
Can you talk a little bit about some of the other comparisons and contractions that you did in the report about breaking it down on the ward basis for some of the policy issues? Because that seems to be pretty interesting to see, and then what the difference is between people that either own their properties or rent them.
Sure, thank you. That is a great question. We did provide these comparisons for a number of the questions now, not all of them, but the, for example, through Ward of Residency, it certainly was varied. I'm kind of doing a quick scan here. I can touch on some of the specific ones if you'd like. By Ward, we also looked at variables of respondent age, housing tenure, and race and ethnicity. Generally, a lot, there was a lot of areas where we actually did not see a statistically significant difference across groups, and I find often that that can be just as interesting in an area where maybe you were hoping to see or expecting to see something that shows that an area of the city may feel more or less positively. There were certainly a lot of comparisons that came up that weren't showing us a difference that was meaningful in the results. Does that speak to your question, or would you like me to?
Well, I thought it was interesting, and I didn't be, I wasn't able to make a connection between the income categories also with the difference in the affordable housing question. And then there was a little thread of something that did concern me that I'd like you to address, is that it seemed that there was somewhat less strong support for people feeling good about the city of Longmont when we're looking at some of the minority responses. So it just, you know, the Ward, it was a pretty stark difference in some of those, a couple of those points, too.
Sure, sure. I think I'm going to kind of do a quick scan. Were there some, were you thinking more of the characteristics of the community, some that were standing out there? Affordable housing, particularly? Okay, okay. So in this one, what I'm, so really what I'm noticing here in the affordable housing policy question, which was the last slide we touched on, is those living in Ward 1 tended to have lower support here in, let's see, just the property tax question. And so there's a couple ways to look at it, and I think oftentimes, it's kind of, it goes a little bit back to, we need to dig a little bit deeper, and also connect it to things that you may already know about the community, and maybe different challenges that different residents may be facing compared to others. So it's an opportunity to link this data more to other reasons that you might find for why that is happening. Unfortunately, the results themselves don't give you that why, or really give you a better look into, well, if this is an issue, and we're trying to figure out how to best meet needs to resolve this issue for community members that are maybe feeling the issue a little bit more. It's an opportunity to dig a little bit deeper. Maybe it's something like a focus group, reaching out to residents in the community that you know kind of fit into that, that mold of what these cross tabs show. So those that really are maybe giving a lower rating, be able to reach out to these community members more specifically, and have an opportunity to dig a little bit deeper and learn why, and also what the obstacles are that bring them to that point. So my, what I would say would be that it's a matter of finding out more information, that these kind of point you in a direction, but don't give you that full picture, just kind of that umbrella around the full picture.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess, just to clarify, so the results are just perception, meaning that they, just based on their perception, this is what we think, right? We could be the safest city in the entire nation, but it's perception.
That's correct, that's correct. It's a lot of times, quite a variety of things. It can be that, you know, one particular resident taking the survey heard a story from someone, and that right away is impacting the way that they're going to respond to individual items based on their experiences, other people's experiences, the information that they have access to to really understand what challenges truly are facing the community. And it's, I think, really a matter of that. It is a perception and an opinion, and an opportunity then to potentially see how to change that perception. Is it making different amounts of information available? Is it reaching out in different ways, whether it's through schools or different events going on in the community, to be able to kind of best distribute that information to inform residents in a way that will then impact their perception?
And I guess, I guess, just responding to that briefly, I mean, I wouldn't want to change their perception. I would like to know whether or not there is or is not a problem, and then address it, whether it's affordable housing or crime, or, because if we live in a slum, but like, hey, this is awesome, she thought this was great, but crime rates like through the roof, still stinks. But, so I guess my only question is, next time, would it be possible, and I don't know, I'm not an expert in the work you do, would it be possible to do some type of parallel questioning that basically says, why do you have these perceptions? Because I'd be curious to know, like, I mean, two years ago, we were the second safest city in the state. We still are? We still are, great. But, okay, great. But we're still, but apparently from the survey, people are freaking out that, you know, that crime will overrun the city. And so I'd just like to know where the perception's coming from. That's what I think, too, but I'm asking you a question, I'm setting you up.
Well, I think that's a great idea, and certainly something we can work on incorporating into the next iteration of the survey. And typically, what we'll try to do would be to potentially combine some of the questions that are being asked on the safety-specific survey, to try to understand those reasons. So it might be a matter of kind of listing out a variety of reasons that could be where this perception is coming from, and gauging how much of a problem those specific items related to crime or feelings of safety are, and expanding from that way. But I also think it's a great connection that we can make currently to take these results and pair them with other things, other research and information that has been gathered, and other things you know about the community, to kind of build that larger picture. Because these are, these are a snapshot in time of residents' opinions about what they know and, you know, how they're feeling. Truly, it is kind of a basis of how do people feel about these things. So it can certainly be used to, in combination with other sources of information, as well as something we can elaborate on in the next iteration to really kind of put a pinpoint in where this is starting and what's happening there.
Well, thank you, Chelsea.
Mayor, can I add something to that as well? And Mike and I have had this debate over the years, because he has the same concerns that you do about the results of the surveys when they come, and there are a variety of things that could add to that perception, and I think Mike is of the opinion that the media has a lot to do with that, what stories people are hearing at any given time, in any particular, during the time a survey is taken. And that's part of the reason why we've asked Mike to come, because his survey does dig a little deeper, and he has results that he wants to share with you that I think speak to your concerns, Councilmember Bagley, a little more. The other thing I wanted to add is that in the past, we were doing an every-other-year survey, so in the even years, we're doing this sort of general umbrella survey. In the odd years, we were digging deeper, where we were asking those why questions, and we got some very interesting results about that. A few years back, the council decided not to do that off-year survey, but if it's something the council wants to bring back and do again, we certainly can, or we can pair it up, you know, in the even-numbered survey as well, as Chelsea indicated. So I just wanted you to be aware of that, and know that those options are available to you.
I want to pair it. I want to set it. I want to pair it.
Yeah.
Great.
Well, I think one of the conversations, so I think it's even beyond crime. I think there were some other areas of the survey that I saw that I wanted to know why, and that's something we need to look at in the future. Frankly, the other thing that we've talked about more from an economic development perspective as we talk about the previous conversation is also, how do we get a sense of what the region thinks about us, and so we can start taking that data and putting it together? Because I think that's an equally important piece when we're working in that world with essentially a different group. And so I know that LAC, we're going to be talking about that as we look to the future.
And I would also like to add that Chelsea gave you a very broad overview, I think it was just a handful of slides, but the actual report and analysis from the NRC is about 120 pages. So it is deep in detail, and is available on the city's website for the public to dig into if they so choose to do that. And the last thing is, I was looking over at Sandy just now, and she reminded me that we don't have money budgeted for an off-year survey at this point, so it'd be something you'd want to discuss at budget time to make sure that, something that she wanted to spend money on. All right, so if there's no more questions for Chelsea, I'm going to invite Eric Hozempa up to share some of the results from the Community Foundations survey. And give me a second, I'll pull up the PowerPoint for you, Eric.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for letting me be here. I'm also joined by our board president, Roy White. He's in the audience, and he has a title that's much too long for me to repeat, but he is an engineer, a senior engineer over at Zylings, so very fortunate to have him on our Board of Trustees. Just arrow, back and forth? Okay, cool. All right, and thank you so much. And I'll share with you our survey. There are some similar themes, I think, with what Chelsea was telling you. Just a bit of background is, we received 466 responses from our survey, which is plus or minus 5% margin of error. And this is a random sample of people in Longmont. We specifically target Longmont through social media, through Facebook and Twitter. That's what we do, and we use these survey results to help with the direction of the Longmont Community Foundation, and we also help just listen a little bit more about what's going on in Longmont, and what do people care about. So the first one is, it's an open-ended question. We always ask people, we've been doing this for three years. We always ask people, just list one word that best describes Longmont. And I always like to see things like comfortable, community-friendly. As the director of the Longmont Community Foundation, I always like to see community really high, so that's my own interest. But top words, friendly, community, growing, comfortable, family. And this is the first time in our three years that we've seen growing, and words that were action-oriented, growth, aggressive, that sort of thing. You might be snickering a little bit, boring is up there, too, as well. But, you know, for me, my opinion is, is that's not necessarily a negative thing, that's just people anxious for more stuff, more things to do, more places to shop, more opportunities, if you will. And then the next one is, is we actually ask people, again, we're not prompting them with any information, we're just asking them, what are the three challenges that our community faces? Growth, flood, traffic, all of those things came out. Affordable housing, first time again, affordable housing was in top five. We had never seen that before in the three years. Again, if you're looking at themes, too, growth, affordable housing, growth, other things, traffic, they all kind of are intertwined. So it didn't surprise anyone, really, if you see growth and you see traffic concerns, flood. Everybody was probably also, front of mind was also thinking about some of the construction that's going on related to the flood recovery, that sort of thing, too, as well. And then jobs, of course. People are always concerned about jobs and economic activity. And then, again, without any prompting, we asked people to ask, to answer, what would they do as far as ways to improve Longmont? Businesses, shopping, downtown, community. Community really was the sense of events, they liked the parades, they liked the events, they liked the community things that get people out, the art walks, that sort of thing. And then bring was another word, and then when you delve into that a little deeper, it means, again, action-oriented, bring businesses, more opportunity, bring maybe some family-oriented recreation activities to Longmont, that sort of thing. And then as far as getting better, the things that are getting better, and I know Kimberly McKee was happy to see this result, but Longmont's downtown was number one, which was the first time we've seen that, as far as Longmont's downtown is the number-one thing that people believe is getting better. Arts and culture, people overall think that arts and culture are getting better, access to food, and then Longmont's image. I think all bodes well for growth, for perception, for community, if you will.
What are the colors?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. So the yellow or the golden rod is really the improving part. And the other ones are staying about the same, declining, that sort of thing. So the blue is declining 25%. If you look at the Longmont's downtown, that orange, if you will, is staying about the And then the other one would be no response. They didn't know. And when you delve into the demographics deeper, it doesn't surprise you that the younger folk, if you look at younger kids, teenagers and such who responded to the questions, didn't really have a perception of caring for the elderly. They obviously might care for the elderly, but they have no perception of what the care is of seniors in the city of Longmont. As far as getting worse, again, affordable housing showed up as number one, homelessness, issues of poverty, and substance abuse were also in the top four here. Not entirely surprised, but I'd say probably of the one that was the greatest surprise was affordable housing, that it was number one. But again, I think if you've got tensions of growth, then you're probably going to have tensions of housing, too, as well. And then what is the thing that we should all focus on in the next one or two years? And again, this is not entirely surprising. People, generally speaking, think education is great in the community. They are very proud of the school district, but when asked what they think we should focus on in the next few years, usually it tends to be education, with the exception of community involvement and business development. Again, people want opportunity, they want things to do, they want jobs, economic opportunity.
What's the blue mean here?
The blue means staying the same, again, so. Other comments, and we have scads of comments. I didn't share all of them for you, but these just kind of gives you some garden-variety comments. You have a certain portion of the population that wants a roller rink. I remember those days when I was here, growing up. But again, goes back to tying into community involvement, which are all positive things with the community, which I really, I really find fortunate for Longmont, is that we actually live in a community where people are thinking about it being friendly, open, that sort of thing. The comments range anywhere from people who have recent transplants to people who've been here for a long time. There are some obviously negative comments, there are some very positive comments. I'd say overall, people were fairly positive. And then our age range, we actually skewed pretty young and getting responses to this, and we're very proud of that, too, in the sense that we didn't get a lot of older folks, just older folks, I should say. Thank you, we go, appreciate that.
There we go.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Our old lives?
Well, yeah, me, too. Me, both. I've seen this before, so forgive me. So 31 to 46 is the largest range of age, which is great for us. We really wanted to hear from a wide breadth of people. And then, it's wet in here.
You too, though. Live on, baby.
Okay. There we go. And then ethnicity, we have some work to do here. We, for the last few years, we've actually heard predominantly from the white community, and we'd like to reach out a little bit more for the Latino community for our next surveys. Our first year, we actually got a really good survey response from the Latino community. In the last two years, we haven't had as great of response. And then finally, it just shows you that they live in Longmont, they do want to be contacted about their survey answers. Again, this is an opportunity for us to go out and interact with them and see what else they'd want to do to improve Longmont, or what specifically around maybe issues of crime and that sort of thing. How do they get their perceptions, I guess, is one of those key questions that I'd like to ask, is where do you get your perceptions? How do you get them? Those sorts of things, I think it'd be interesting to ask them. So in summary, overall, our respondents enjoy Longmont, the community feel the family-friendly, positive about progress, which is great. Concerns that come with progress, though, are the growth, the traffic, poverty, homelessness, those sorts of things, affordable housing. Again, people like to voice opinions, but I think unfortunately, the world has changed, or fortunately, the world has changed, and no longer are many people, many of these respondents wanting to come to a meeting and maybe share more of their opinion. maybe share more of their opinions. It has to be done in a different sort of venue. And I don't know if that's through social media or whatever, but there needs to be a different way to engage them, I think. And that's one of the things that as a community foundation is important to us, to make sure that people remain engaged, but thinking of different ways to engage them. And then again, just some other themes that I already pointed out. So that's all I have.
Any questions for? Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Eric. So I'm going to turn it over to Mike Butler now, and Mike, I'll work on getting the PowerPoint up for you.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Members of Council, Mike Butler, Public Safety Chief, the third in the trilogy of survey presentations. We conducted this survey in May of '13. We do these surveys every two years. They're very in-depth. We asked several questions related to, I'll get on to the next slide, or we asked several questions in relation to perception. What's your perception of safety? What's your satisfaction rate with police? What are your priorities in terms of police services? What's the level of victimization? Some crimes that we have are not reported, and so we want to know what level of victimization there is. And what level are you willing to participate in terms of partnering with our community? And so we delve into each of those areas pretty in-depth. I'll look back and say that we do send these surveys out to about 3,000 households. 844 were completed for a rate of 30%. What's not on here is our over-under error rate is 3.4%. And then they're weighted to represent the demographics. Now, one of the perception issues that is, I'm not sure you can see that real well if you have it on your screen, great. But this is a perception issue, and for those of you who have been around a little while, these were benchmarks that we put together years ago that were related to growth, and we just sustained these because we thought that they were important enough for us to understand what people thought of their personal safety, what people thought of their sense of safety when it came to property, and then what was their sense of disorder in our community? Sense of disorder, things like abandoned cars, graffiti, vandalism, murdering folks, those kinds of things. And so you can see the numbers here from 1999. The sense of personal safety, we've always wanted to keep it less than 5% who felt that they were unsafe or very unsafe. And you can see in 2013, 4% of the community thought that they were unsafe or very unsafe, which is below our benchmark, and it's the lowest number we've had since 1999. The sense of property safety is the lowest it's ever been, it's 8%. The rate that we want to see is 10% or less. And the sense of disorder, it's maintained some consistency over the years, but nevertheless, in 2013, that perception rose to 87.9% that not believe disorder is a problem or just a minor problem. So again, you've heard other surveys speak to perception. This is our major perception question here in terms of how people feel about their own personal being, about their property. Overall satisfaction rates with our police, about 75% of the folks we surveyed thought that they were satisfied or very satisfied, and approximately 5% of the folks were either dissatisfied or very dissatisfied, and the rest can be found in either neither or don't The priority that people gave us has been pretty consistent throughout the years. In general, residents' priorities align themselves with our traditional tasks. They want us to arrest criminals, they want us to prevent crime, they want us to investigate cases, they want us to control gangs, juvenile crime, and quick response time to the emergencies that they call in on. And asked what might be most important to residents personally. All of those above remained relatively high, but the two that were added to that list were visible patrol and traffic enforcement. I wanted to give you some numbers in terms of what we're seeing as trends. You can look from 2010 to 2013, you can see for the most part, a general drop in crime from year to year to year to year. And you can see the per thousand, which is what a lot of rating systems use around the country or in around the state, when they look at crime and safety in a community, it's dropped from 29 in 2010 to 21 in 2013. And then as a little comparison for those communities that we consider that are around us and similar, similar in size, similar in demographics at some level, although I think we can make a case in Longmont that some of our social economics are probably not as high as some of these other communities, but you can see Longmont, Loveland, Greeley, Boulder, and Fort Collins, we had 1,900 crimes in 2013, Loveland had 1,832, Greeley had 3,736, Boulder had 3,195, and Fort Collins had 4,178. But again, the number that we like to look at in terms of ratios, the per capita, per The self-reported victimization, you don't need to necessarily look at this chart, this is going to cause brain damage, you don't want to look at it too closely. But I just want you to look at that last line on the right-hand side, you're going to see generally speaking, the level of victimization is self-reported by our community is going way down. And then, this was somewhat of a gratifying piece of data for us. What it shows, on the left-hand column, police working alone should be responsible for the issues that are listed on the left-hand side. The police and community working together, those numbers are very high, except for speed and traffic violations. And of course, I'm surprised 30% of the people thought that they might be responsible for curbing speed and traffic enforcement. But nevertheless, maybe that's an indicator that that's 30% of the people who are just self-correcting and modulating as they're driving. But when you look at drug driving, traffic congestion, gang activity disorder, drug use, domestic violence, juvenile crime, neighborhood problems, what we've been focusing on for many years is this sense of partnership, this sense of joint accountability, this sense of our community and our police having responsibility for public safety issues, and what we're seeing is a trend towards just exactly that. And so we feel, like I said, we're pretty satisfied, gratified that that's the kind of information that we're seeing out of our community. And then, I think this is our last slide, again, for the audiences, might be a little bit difficult, but these are actual crime prevention techniques that are used by people in our community. And you can go down the list in terms of people who are using these kinds of techniques to either protect themselves or to protect their property. And certainly, identity theft is something, and computer crime is significantly increased, and people have taken note. We've done a tremendous amount of work around our community to educate and build awareness in our community around this, and people are taking that seriously. I'm not going to go through this list, but you can see that people are doing a lot of things to protect themselves and to harden the targets, so to speak. And again, that goes into that sense of responsibility in terms of safety. So those were the slides we had and the information we had, and certainly welcomed questions, but that's where it's at.
Thank you, Mike. I was actually kind of surprised this winter when it got really cold, how many cars were sold because of puffing, that people warm their cars up and leave them unlocked, and that just seems like it's unfathomable to me, how someone can do that.
While I'm here, and for you all, for people in the audience and people in TV land, a public service announcement. Please don't run your car and go into the house and hope to expect that it's still there. We had an incident here recently where someone took a car that was started, and the person was in the house. When the person came outside of the house, they found that the person took their car but left another car. And then that, and then that car, then he took another car, then he took that car up into Weld County and found somebody, it was a marked fire truck that was driven by a fire chief. And the fire chief stopped to help this guy because he was off on the road, and next thing you know, the fire chief is seeing his marked fire unit being taken by the same person. And then the story's not done. This guy's, he goes into Loveland and then trades in the fire truck for another car. And therein, a pursuit started and he was captured. Some of these things can get, we can't make this stuff up.
Stranger than fiction. Councilmember Vagary.
Thanks, Mayor Coombs. Two things. One is an opinion with absolutely no data, and two is just an anecdotal attaboy. One is, I was just struck by the fact that while we were going through the list of the various crimes, I don't know why, but we tend to get on the news a lot. You know, a lot of those, you know, I mean, 15th and Main, you know, my window faces out on that intersection, there's something always going on, and when there is, it gets on the news. And then I take it back, it's not always going on, the big stuff that goes on gets on the news. And then, and so I think that, yeah, we have a small, cozy, comfortable little town, and what else is there to report on, other than, you know, stuff like this? You know, grandma baked a cake, you know, that doesn't probably ring so interesting with folks. But the other thing is that, you know, in my line of work, I'm always amazed at what I'm in court looking at people in other communities, the types of crime they're in court for, and then I look at usually what I'm there in court for. And Longmont, our criminals are kind of a low class of folks that, you know, it tends to be gentler crime. And so I think you're doing a great job, and I'm dumbfounded a little bit as to why people would have the perception they do. But the data shows, I mean, second safest city in the state, and that's known in small part to our, you know, men and women in blue, so thank you.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Are you doing another survey this year?
Yes, we are. We'll be doing it starting in April, I believe.
And will we get the results this year as well?
We can get you those results when it's done. It's typically not done until like, maybe November, December, once it's all tabbed in.
I'd like to see the new ones.
One to get in there.
Thank you.
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. What really surprised me with the numbers you put up for the various crimes is that forcible rape is higher in Longmont than in other places where, again, this perception idea that we've heard a lot about university campuses being unsafe for women, and rape, and date rape, and drugging of women, and to see our number, and we're not a university community, can you, is it because people are reporting the crime? What can you attribute to our numbers?
Mayor, Councilperson Levison, 99% of those rapes are committed by someone in the family or someone who's known to them. And a vast majority of those are done within the family. We, I will tell you that I think a police department can cause a particular crime to go up with a lot of focus and a lot of awareness, and trying to get people to really focus a little bit more on that and report it. And we have done a lot of work in getting people to report a very under-reported crime. And so if any police department anywhere wants to resolve that issue, those numbers are going to go up. You can say the same thing about domestic violence. Around 20% of these crimes are reported nationwide, and that's probably true for our community as well. Well, we see it as success when more people are reporting, because ultimately, there's some services and some help that can come. And so we have given a lot of focus, and we think that's why that crime is up.
Do we have, my follow-up question is really that we do have enough services to service women and others who might be forcibly raped? We have enough depth to service them to address the issue?
I'm going to say and say that we can always use more. This is one of those where I can tell you our detectives are strapped, and this is one of these crimes that requires a tremendous amount, a different kind of skill set, and there's a tremendous amount of time that has to go into these cases. And so as these numbers go up, their caseloads go up, and I've heard from just about all of those detectives who are investigating those kinds of crimes, that they are maxed out. I will also say, that's from the investigatory police perspective, then you have what happens through the rest of the criminal justice system, and then you have services. I can't really speak to those, but I will say that that's, I'm certain that they're strapped as well.
Well, I hope that we take these numbers, as the suggestion is that we look at some of these data points and see where we can marshal some resources to, when crime happens, to make sure that the victims of crime are treated with respect and get services, that they can put their lives back together. I also know that the more that crime is reported, certain kinds of crime, the more people perceive that crime might happen to them personally. So some of the perceptions of what you think, well, my cars have been gone through in my driveway over the number of years I've lived in Longmont, and, you know, it just happens that if I forget to lock my car one night, that's the night someone goes through my car 15 feet from my back door on my property. So, you know, it happens, and it can happen, and some of it's just pretty random. But I also know that the success of the police department to investigate and solve some of these crimes, the petty crimes, like, you know, going through cars and the BB gun incidents we've had over the years, I think it makes people vigilant and also encourages people to report, because we do get good results in convictions and getting people. Is there any other way you've looked at the survey information to glean whether or not the high level of use of the community justice partnership has impacted perception of crime or any, I don't see anything about recidivism in this report.
And I will start generally here. Since we've had restorative justice, our police department has referred approximately 3,500 cases, and they range from juvenile to adults, from misdemeanors to felonies, from first-time offenders to multiple offenders. We do track that in that process, recidivism and restorative justice, approximately 10%. I will tell you that we have to look at it from a Boulder County-wide perspective, and sometimes people move out of the county or the community, and sometimes it's hard to keep track, but local and national trends are around 60 to 70%, and that number has stayed relatively constant over the years. But having said that, we really believe that restorative justice has played a role in making our community safer. You can just start doing the numbers and the math in terms of the size of our community, the number of cases that have gone through that process, and the recidivism rates. If they're just significantly lower, over time, you're going to see fewer and fewer people involved in crime, and you're going to see fewer and fewer people victimized.
Hey, thank you, Rego.
Can I make one more comment there? I think what you've heard tonight is a lot of really good information for sure, and I was heartened to hear Councilmember Finley say she wanted to see next year's results as well, because I think the strength in these surveys is the trending, is what we see from year to year to year. Any one given survey in any given year is good information for sure, but reacting or creating policy or making decisions based on one single survey is probably not the right thing. It's looking at the trends from previous years, and we've been doing this quite a while now. We're very fortunate to have a consistency with the National Research Center in providing that information and being able to compare apples to apples over a long period of time. And so that's really the strength, I think, in the surveys that we do. And then one last thought, because I'm the Public Information Officer, I need to toot the horn of the website. Our survey indicated this year that the use of the city's website has jumped 10%, 10 percentage points from two years ago. So I think that, at the... So I think that, uh, that's a, a good pat on the back for all the public information team folks that have worked on the new website. Because this survey was conducted during that period of time where the new website was, um, launched. And, uh, so obviously it's a, it's a reflection of what's happening in our society. More people are reading electronic information versus the paper, but also think it's a nice pat on the back for what we're doing with the city's website as well. So with that, I want to thank Mike and Eric and Chelsea for coming tonight and thank you for your patience.
Mayor, if I can jump in really quick. I think one of the things that I do want to talk about, um, when we talked about, uh, I believe it was Councilmember Bagley that said that the, the, the media, um, and especially what we see, televised media tends to report on the negative issues that we see in our community. We think there's a lot of positive things occurring in, in, in Longmont and, and I could sit here and rattle all of those off very quickly, uh, but they don't seem to.
Do what?
Right. And so the point is what I wanted to let you know is that that's actually a major initiative that we're undertaking now in bringing folks together and having conversations. Um, and I know Mike is getting ready to meet with some folks and actually talk about how we really present the positive side of our community and really get that out in terms of addressing, um, local perception, but really regional perception as well as we move into the future. So that is an initiative that we're working on now.
Councilmember Richardson.
Um, I also wanted to thank you for the, the website that has improved. And I think a lot of the reason people are, have started using it more is that they realized during the flood how really useful that was the city did and Director Rattimer did, and you, of course, there you go, did such a wonderful job of keeping people up to date when it was really a, a crisis and they realized that it was something that's functioning. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess it's time for public invited to be heard. Oh, yeah. Let's, let's take a five-minute break. It's a good idea.
So, some of the things that we've been able to do this past year thanks to our partnerships, is thanks to the strategic alliances that we formed this year with the Longmont Air Economic Council, with the school districts, the universities, the chambers, Longmont Boulder, the member Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. We created partnerships with Google. Can I have a few more seconds, please?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Google, Incar, the city of Longmont and Boulder, nonprofits like the Comitehway MCA, and law enforcement offices like the DA's office and the sheriff's office. So, we have so much work in front of us, but we cannot accomplish this next step without being able to have an office. And that's why you guys can help us take this next historic step into being able to serve this much-needed community, into us being a more inclusive community. Thank you so much.
Thank you for saying. Sandra Stewart?
I'm Sandra Stewart. I live at 1211 Twin Peaks Circle. Mayor Coombs and city council members. Last week, I spoke about the critical need for more affordable rentals in Longmont. And today, I'm back. Longmont still is down 3,000 rental units. Our vacancy rate is still less than 3 percent. But tonight, you all have the opportunity to pass the ordinances on the second reading for 02015-07 amendments to Chapter 15.03, Chapter 15.04 of the Land Development Code regarding affordable housing in mixed industrial zoning district. I would encourage you all to vote yes. This would allow Longmont Housing Authorities to build more affordable units on their property adjacent to the suite apartments. And prior this evening, we've heard a number of folks, or we've heard a lot of people being very concerned about affordable housing. And this is an opportunity to move forward one more step. And I would just encourage you to vote yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sandra. Dan Benavides?
Yes, my name is Dan Benavides. I live at 804 Grand Avenue, Longmont. Honorable Mayor Coombs and honorable members of the council. First of all, I just want to thank you all. Your support in everything what's happening in our community has made our community throughout the Front Range. They're saying, "You belong in Longmont. Look at Longmont." What I'm referring to a lot, too, is the walks that Chief Butler has asked me to accompany with throughout our community. I don't know how many people we talked to, 253? I'm losing count. But if you want to talk about getting direct input from people on surveys, go down and talk to the people. And what we're getting back is Longmont is a belonging, creating a belonging revolution. Good example of that, I was in a meeting in Denver today, Youth Transformation Center, people in Colorado Springs everywhere, Highlands Ranch, Denver, Monument. And in that, they brought up, really restorative justice, but how things can be done the right way. And they pointed out Longmont, Colorado. They pointed out if they had more people like Chief Butler going down and walking in the neighborhoods, there probably wouldn't be very many furbuses in this country. I was at a meeting in Boulder yesterday, and they say, "Longmont, look at them." And it's your leadership, too. It's your leadership. Because you stayed there, you made us an inclusive community. We have a population of approximately 25 or 30 percent of our population is Latino. And, you know, maybe the vast majority don't speak English. But when we're down there, walking and talking to the people, and I've been honored to be Chief Butler's interpreter, you know, because I speak the language, what we get back is a, we have not got back any negative. They're saying, "Yes, we love Longmont." "I came from Detroit. Moved here. We love it." "I came from Staten Island." Other people, "We came from Denver." "Oh, we don't like Denver." "Longmont, we love it here." So there's this feeling of inclusivity that you don't maybe get from surveys. And I'm not mocking the surveys, so don't get me wrong. But it is so beautiful, and your support. And I would invite you, and I know Sarah Levenson, councilperson Levisson's asking, I think, "Well, you'd love us to go along with this." We would like that. But maybe when the weather turns a bit better, which is more predictable, we can make arrangements to make appointments, because it would be neat if we're down to talk. And this is right down in the neighborhoods, right in the trenches, so to speak. And you're talking with the people, "We'd love you to come along." But, you know, you have to schedule. You're very busy. So it's difficult to set a schedule in the wintertime. But I'm sure Chief Butler wouldn't mind at all if he came along with us. But I can't compliment him enough. This is setting a standard throughout the entire county. I get it from Texas. Chief Butler just talked to South Africa the other day on Skype. And they're saying, "Look what Longmont's doing. It's reconciliation at the highest levels of what we did in South Africa with Mandela." And Longmont, Colorado, Texas. Friends, I'm sorry. Just two more seconds.
Sure.
Texas. My friends in the oil business in Texas, I've sent them what's going on, and said, "Wow, we've got to come and visit you guys." Illinois, Mexico, South Africa. Longmont's really getting on the map. And I'm just so honored that Chief Butler had asked me to accompany him on these talks. So thank you for your support also. This is one hell of a good city councilor and mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your hard work.
Thank you.
Edwina Salazar?
Do you need help? Are you going to fall?
I walked a mile around McIntosh Lake the other day.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and city council. Happy to be here. I want to, I'm Edwina Salazar, and I'm at 303 Atwood, and I'm the executive director of the OUR Center. I want to encourage you to pass on second reading the Land Development Code regarding affordable housing to the zoning district. And I'd like to tell you a few more data points that we've taken on at the OUR Center for 2014. We've had a 30 percent increase in requests for utility assistance. And when we ask residents about why they're needing utility assistance, they are choosing to pay their rent first. And their rents have increased. So they're really stretched. And that has resulted in more utility shut-offs and more need for utility assistance. The second data point is, we did survey the 76 people that were referred to our case management program because they needed help with housing. Now, these are homeless folks that are working. Every single person had a job. Out of the 76, we were only able to help 20 of them find housing. So obviously, people who are working are having difficulty finding housing and are remaining homeless as a result. So I think this is really a step forward with revising the Land Development Code. This is one way we have of addressing this serious need in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Edwina. Paul Tiger?
Greetings, Paul Tiger, 452 Dixon. So I'm coming in part ways of an apology in that I'm wound a little too tight. Did you guys notice that? But maybe not so much the last year and a half or so. I've been pretty busy with my business. And I got all cranky about great fun on Main Street, other people having great fun on Main Street. And on those days, when really nothing's going on in my business, I could close down and go fishing and not impinge upon everybody else's good time. So in the future, as it has to do with anything that's going on, art walks, or, you know, whatever, whatever you want to do, you're in charge. Seriously. And I'll just shut up.
Do we pass a resolution?
What I won't shut up about now is whatever it is you guys are cooking up with Title 15. You know what I'm talking about. It's got some ordinance number, which I don't know, and I'm not giving a bother. I don't think it actually does yet. I think that Eugene was telling me that it hasn't been developed to that point yet. So I didn't vote for Eugene. And I consider the office, not the person, because I think he's great. And so all the decisions that could be coming from that about who has standing and so forth, I'm okay with him making those decisions, except I'm not okay with somebody like Clay Douglas making those decisions. And so I think about the office and not the person. So I ask you to reconsider how that's done. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. James Kenworthy?
James, James Kenworthy, 107 Caribou Place. I didn't come here to talk about the media, but I'm going to give it a few seconds. If you're watching the news on TV, you're not watching the news. It's corporate-owned. Big powerful corporations are telling you what they want you to hear. So if you want to find the news, get on the computer and search. Or you can listen to 88.5 FM. That's a local station. They've got a good news program at 7 o'clock in the morning, if you can stand the sloppy language. And they have excellent news at 6:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, a nice variety of programs. So I'm back to talk about sustainability a little bit. What I didn't say last week was, if you want to read a good article about sustainability, go to Wikipedia and just put sustainability in the search engine. They've got some interesting graphics. And I learned a lot just in a few minutes. So, the sustainability problem is a world problem, but the solutions are local. You're not going to find the heads of any nations soon doing anything about sustainability. So it's up to us. That's us, all of us. We have to do our part. And if we don't do our part, nothing gets done. Eh, there was something else I wanted to say. I just want to repeat the definitions. Sustainability, conserving an ecological balance by avoiding depletion of natural resources. Unsustainability, upsetting the ecological balance by depleting natural resources. And the system we're talking about is human life on Earth. That's the system we're talking about. Moving towards sustainability is a social challenge. It's also a social advantage. And the last thing I want to do is read Amendment 14 from the U.S. Constitution. "All persons born or naturalized in the United States and subject to the jurisdiction thereof are citizens of the United States and of the state wherein they reside. No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privilege or immunities of citizens of the United States." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Strider Benson?
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and council. Some people just love to hear me come up and say bizarre things about random concerns from time to time, like our U.S. Congress next month is inviting Netanyahu to speak precisely to sabotage American foreign policy so that they can provoke a war against Iran. This is serious stuff. On the other hand, President Obama just approved offshore drilling off the Atlantic coast, which could seriously damage the coast and later on the planet. And things like that, like Mr. Kraft, who owns the Boston Patriots, good buddy of Roger Goodell, commissioner of the NFL. And he says the NFL should apologize to him for investigating the Deflategate. That's like saying that we, the citizens of the United States, ought to apologize to the banksters for stealing 20 to 50 trillion dollars from us six years ago and almost bankrupting the world economy. So let's pay a little more attention. However, I got a request that I should sing last week. So I thought of a poem that I wrote 20-something years ago, and then I noticed, oh yeah, the song is in the title, so maybe it's got a tune. Here you go. It depends, you have to know how to spell train. It's spelled apostrophe T-R-A-N-E. Train, train song, song. There's magic in the mountains, and there's mellow in the meadow, but there's strife in all the cities here below. And there's sparkle in the laughter of the spunky little child who still believes in just what we lost long ago. We've learned to punch our little numbers into all their rightful sluts. And for this, they let us boast and eat and ski. We parrot all their rightful yeses, punish all their wrongful knots. Yet after all this courage searching, who is you and who is me? So let's hitch up Duke's old piano, let Louis' trumpet wail and scream, while the train comes ride, ride, riding on his ho, ho, ho horn. And the drumbeat pumps, the lap pounds the rhythm into long-forgotten dreams as we dance to make this troubled earth our home. And the drumbeat pumps the rhythm into long-forgotten dreams as we dance to make this troubled earth our home.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ready for your second reading items? First item on second reading is ordinance 2015-06, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2015. This is the ordinance that had the corrected number in it. I believe you'd have to check with the city attorney, but I believe we need to substitute this ordinance. Thank you. We do not have staff presentation.
Okay. Any questions from council before we open up the public hearing? Okay, I will now open up the public hearing on ordinance 2015-06. Does anybody from the public would like to speak on this? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Gregory?
I move that we pass ordinance 2015-06.
The substitute? Yeah.
Ah, I move that we pass ordinance 2015-06 as substituted?
Yes.
Good enough?
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. Then, where's the substitute?
Right here.
Got it. So technically, as far as rules of order go, I've got a, I move that we pass ordinance 2015-06, this right here, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2015.
Technically, the motion you need is to substitute the corrected version for the one in the packet.
So I move that we substitute the corrected version for the version that's currently or was in our packets.
Okay. Okay, let's vote on that substitution.
Got to get it right.
Got to get it right.
Okay, I guess that passes seven to zero. If councilmember Christiansen?
I'm sorry, I messed up your vote.
Can you just tell us where your vote is?
Yes.
Okay, it's seven to zero. Councilmember Levinson?
Thank you, Mayor. One thing, there seems to be a difference in the number in our packet in the communications section for the Transportation Community Investment Fee Fund. It says $300,000. The ordinance says 250. So is there another difference that you need to note to us? In the body of the packet, it says 300. On the back page, it says 250 on my front page. Okay. So I guess, I'm wondering why it says 250 on line 12, page 1. And is there additional?
So Mayor Coombs and councilmember Levinson. So Teresa Malloy, budget manager. So the $250,000 on line 12, page 1, is referencing what was included in our adopted 2015 budget. The appropriation adds an additional $300,000 to that.
Thank you. So if there are no other questions, I would like to move the substituted ordinance, 2015-06.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Your next item is ordinance 2015-07, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapters 15.03 and 15.04 of the Longmont Municipal Code regarding affordable housing in the mixed industrial zoning district. We do not have a staff presentation. Oh, I guess we do have a staff presentation. Joni is going to do that.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, Joni Marsh, Director of Planning and Development Services. Just a note that in your packet, you do have the updated ordinance per your direction on the 13th to change affordable housing from a limited to a conditional use in the use table, which would mean it would go before the Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing. If you have any questions, I'd also be happy to answer those.
Councilmember Levinson?
Yes, I actually had, I was looking at one of the charts in the ordinance, and I didn't know whether or not there needed to be a correction. It would be on, let me get to the right section here. Sorry, it's not scrolling quickly enough here. On page 10 of the ordinance, there's the chart that says use classification in specific principal uses dwellings, five or more dwelling units. There's nothing indicated under MI as being a C. Should there be? Mayor Coombs and councilmember Levinson, so the way that those pages lapped over, if you go back to the bottom of page nine, you'll see multifamily, then it should say dwellings five or more. So the C is actually on the page before? On the page, okay. I just wanted to make sure, because the reference is further down, and it's not on the same line. So you could probably understand my confusion. And there was one other question that I had a notation on. Okay, so page seven of the ordinance was the other question I had. Let me just get to that. And again, it's not scrolling down fast enough. So under, so the change that was the amendment that councilmember Santos suggested would be that the C that appears under Section 8 at the bottom on page seven. Is that correct, then?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thanks for helping me understand that.
Sure.
Okay, seeing no other questions from council, I'm going to open up the public hearing. An ordinance 2015-07, is there any from the public that would like to speak on this item?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Michael Reese. I'm the executive director of Longmont Housing Authority. And I guess we started all this. So we're really at a point where we appreciate the support of the ordinance. We worked through it. I think the conditional use clause really captures any future problems or potential conflicts that might come up. And we'd like to be able to move forward and refinance the suites property that is currently on the current zoning. So I urge you to support. Thank you for all your assistance, and I want to thank Joni and her staff as well.
Thank you, Michael. Councilmember Santos? Oh, is there, excuse me, is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak on this ordinance first?
Hello, Mayor Coombs and council. My name is Jennifer McNeil. I'm the volunteer coordinator for OUR Center, 643 Terrace Street, Longmont. And I came before you last November, and I was very emotional because I was telling you about my own situation with affordable housing. And at the time, I was like, "I'm never ever going to do that again." But it let a lot of people come forward and talk to me, volunteers, staff members, clients from the OUR Center, who just came and shared their own situations. And I just want to let you know a little bit about what they've spoken to me about, how important affordable housing is. I had two different people come to me and tell me that they're choosing between living alone or living with a verbal or otherwise abusive situation. Because in either one of those, or a marriage-type situation, it's someone that they're renting rooms with, seniors that have had to take in roommates so that that money can be transferred to food and medication instead of just paying for rent. Also, a couple of people did make comments about, we had a Realtor come up and talk about the affordable homes to purchase in Longmont, which is amazing, and I hope one day to be a landowner here. But people can't afford to save that money to purchase homes in Longmont. They make well enough where they can actually pay a mortgage, but not to have any kind of a, any kind of a financial stability where they can actually not live at paycheck to paycheck and have some kind of savings or fallback. And then also, of course, I've had more than a few that are retired, and people who have had to go back, chosen to go back to work at least part-time, or in some type of underpaid job, where they're under, I apologize, I'm a little nervous, where they're going back to work because they can't really afford that rental that's going on. As I said before, I am very lucky to have a wonderful renter, or a wonderful Realtor. But there are so many in our community that are losing their housing because owners and different property managers are saying, "Ooh, we can get so much more money." And so it is becoming a major issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this ordinance before I close the public hearing? I guess seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move ordinance 2015-07.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. Oh, councilmember Levinson?
Yes. You know, I like what the Housing Authority is going to do on a particular property. But again, I am not going to vote for this, although I do support the project at the suites. When I was looking at the zoning map, one of the things that very much concerned me is that when we've got affordable housing, we want to make sure that people are ingrained in the community, that they're attached to neighborhoods, and not to isolate people of lower income in small, little pods around the city that are not integrated. I think that in the days in very large cities, we saw low-income affordable housing developments in towers such as Cabrini-Greens in Chicago. That's a model that doesn't work. I know that that system of isolating people is really the old way of doing it. And while I have looked at the zoning map, and I understand the condition, the additional condition, and I appreciate your suggestion, councilmember Santos, I am still uncomfortable with the change to the code in this way. And the thing that I think makes me most uncomfortable is what the staff has written in our last paragraph of our communication, that as part of the overall update to the table of uses, as well as update to the comp plan, the staff will review additional changes to be made to allow market-rate multifamily dwellings in MI and other commercial or industrial zoning districts. I really think that while we I really think that while we are doing it for a very principled use here, for the Housing Authority, I think that, you know, the slippery slope here is we may get unintended poor matchings of housing with mixed industrial uses. And it will be very difficult to make the argument to say, we're not going to want to put a small infill affordable housing unit where it's next to industrial uses that are maybe not compatible, but we're going to get pretty desperate. And I really would like to look at the other impacts on the community, such as the school district trying to service buses to students there, where it might cost other people more money. We haven't really looked at those financial aspects.
Counselwoman Levison?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And I guess I respect and admire Councilmember Levison's comments and obviously her points on this. However, I think that we need to look at this as a, we all agree, and I've heard it said in private and public, that there, that this is a tough problem that we're going to need multiple solutions on. And where do we start? And I just think this is a very easy way to begin allowing folks to come in and build affordable housing. We're here in, you know, one of the leaders on this particular issue, homelessness, the working poor, et cetera, and Ms. Salazar, and her members of her staff, and as well as Michael Reese, saying that the experts say that we need to do this. And not only that, we're not following blindly. It makes good economic sense. Right now, it's, you're not permitted to build in these areas. We're kind of carving out a little niche, saying they can do it. And I did not get government help, but I was in affordable housing for the first six years of my marriage, you know? And it was not with other, you know, not other, but it was not with rich affluent people. It was an affordable housing area, and I was grateful for it, and didn't want a bigger house. I wanted an affordable house. And I think that this is, I think we should vote for it. And I wish it would be unanimous, but if not, let's hopefully get four votes and get her done.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, it passes 6 to 1. That's Councilmember Levison, descending. Counselmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Since this is now passed, again, as mentioned in several other meetings, not, it's kind of related to this ordinance, so I'm going to get through this. Affordable housing, low-income housing needs to be addressed, not only in the city, but county-wide. And it's going to take the other cities and towns in Boulder County and Boulder County, and particularly Boulder itself, to come to the table. Boulder County, as I've told folks who look to buy, it's expensive dirt. You move one mile just to the east from Mountain View and Pace, and you can afford a much bigger home for a lot less money. Boulder County is expensive to live in, and that's very unfortunate. But it has to be a count, we can try to do things, and we've started with the passage of this ordinance to address some of the issues we have here in Longmont, but it's going to take a greater cooperation. And that's what we need to try to start for.
Counselwoman Christensen?
Well, you'll be glad to know that there is a coalition building to do just exactly that with the consort, with, Kathy Fedler can perhaps come talk to us about that sometime because it is a, it is a regional issue, a county-wide issue, and we have to get everybody to start building so that we don't have, you know, everybody fleeing from one town to another. And I think everybody recognizes that and is willing to step up.
Okay. Can I introduce the next item?
Your next item is ordinance 2015-08, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the Park Meadows rezoning from residential low-density R1 to residential planned unit development PUDR, generally located on the south side of Nelson Road, east of Airport Road. There is not a formal staff presentation on this item.
Okay, is there any questions from council before I open up the public hearing? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing on ordinance 2015, excuse me, Councilmember Christensen?
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Never mind. I'm reading, I'm misreading. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance 2015-08. Is anyone from the public that would like to speak on this ordinance? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2015-08. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move passage of ordinance 2015-08.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. That passes 7 to 0.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is, it's two ordinances actually, on water and sewer rates. Ordinance 2015-09, a bill for an ordinance amended title 14, chapter 1404 of the Longmont Municipal Code on the Water Utility and Wells. And ordinance 2015-10, a bill for an ordinance amending title 14, chapter 14.08 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Sewers. We don't have a formal staff presentation on this, but there are members in the audience to answer questions.
Is there any questions from council before I open up the public hearing on ordinance 2015-09 and 010? Okay. Councilmember Vagely?
And I guess, I guess my only question is for staff, just one more time, on a scale of 1 to 10, how badly do we need to do this? If we were to vote it down, what would happen? What is the financial? It's a 10, I'm being told. I would like to hear it from that podium. Just one more time?
I would just say, who wanted to answer, but it is very important in terms of the long-term viability of utilities and the infrastructure work that we need to do. And as I said to council before, if you, I have seen the impacts of not making the improvements that you need to infrastructure and what that can do to a community. And that's why it starts sitting in motion. Will it happen today? No. But will it happen in the future? Yes. And I think when we talk about the infrastructure crisis in the nation and what we're trying to do, this is an important part of that. And what it will say is if it doesn't happen, then there's other conversations that we need to have in terms of where do we start trimming up, and what does that really look like?
So, I mean, since this is second reading, I just want to make sure that media's in the audience, as we just vote on something to raise utility fees, the water fees. So what you're saying is that without this, we don't have the money to fund our infrastructure, correct?
When we look at the long-term plan in terms of the rate studies that we're doing, they have indicated that this is the amount that we need to carry out the activities for the water utility, the wastewater utility.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure that was put on the record one more time. Thanks.
I have a question. I'm going to support this, but let's say, two, three years from now, we're, four years from now, we decide that we want to leverage some of our assets that we own, like excess water, we might want to lease that, to put back into the water fund, or decrease. So, I mean, right now, it's saying it's going to be 9%, 9%, 9%. But is there a possibility, when we consider leveraging some of our assets that we own, if we have excess capacity, just like on Platte River, when we have excess energy, we sell it on the open market and lower everybody's utility bills? Can't we do that with water in principle?
So the answer to that question is yes. And we've had some discussions with council, and we've also indicated that we're going to continue looking at those additional revenue opportunities. What it does is it starts backing it off of the end of the rate increases. So you'll go to the last year, and let's say you can reduce, through alternate revenue or cost effectiveness, you can reduce 4%. That 9% would be reduced by 4% and moved to 5. And so you're backing into where you currently sit in that rate increase. So the answer is yes, but it applies to the last year and the rate increase, and you move back.
Thank you. Counselwoman Levison?
I think we heard pretty good survey data tonight of the perception that our public has, that when they turn on the tap, the water comes out clean and potable, and when they are done with it, it goes through whatever exit device you're sending it, and it doesn't come back. So to me, that's the crucial thing that we've heard tonight, that people like those two things. And this will ensure that those two things will continue to happen with a high level of quality and dependability. So I'm going to vote yes.
Counselwoman Christensen?
I think we also, last time we discussed it, we were talking about how this, part of this is to replace infrastructure from the 70s that is now failing. So is that correct?
Well, it's not that it's failing, but we know that we need to replace that infrastructure based on the life cycle piece of it.
Yes. So if we don't do that, we will have things like in Arvada, where things are, basements are flooding, pipes are broken, huge amounts of damage. So, you know, it's, it seems to be really necessary that we remember every time that we, maintenance is ongoing. We have to keep, we have to keep paying for it. And this is not sort of whimsical fund money. It's money we need.
Well, right. And I think if you, if you think back over the last year, there was a news story where there was a major line that busted near the UCLA campus, and they were showing the water flooding that area. And a couple of years beyond that, there was a line in Virginia where it was flooding a road and impacting other areas, and then ultimately, you don't have water. I think that the reliability piece of this is important, too, when you talk about economic development.
Yeah.
And what folks look for, and they do look for that reliability in all our utilities.
Yes.
Rate increases are not something that we particularly enjoy bringing forward. And we know that they do have an impact on the community. We go through a tremendous amount of due diligence as we're looking at those rate increases. I will tell you that I've sat in the conversations with Public Works staff and the rate consultants, and we, and we've had different discussions. We bring it because it's something that we need to do to make sure that we have the long-term viability of the utilities.
Sure. And it's not just important for private citizens and homes, it's important for businesses to know they've got reliable infrastructure. Thank you.
Counselmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. In fact, it's, 70s not that old, you know, 1970s, it's only 40, only 44 years. Oh, come on, I'm at that mark. Plus, there's stuff that's older than that, that is still up. No. Not you, Councilmember Christensen, but we have infrastructure that is actually older than 1970. So, and those of you who've been to the wastewater treatment plant, there's things over there that's from 1950. Crunching the numbers again, as we did the last several times this item has come up, on average, in the first year, rates are going to go up 80 cents. In the last year, it goes up almost, almost a dollar to $2. If you're a high-end user, you're going to pay a lot more. None of us like to raise rates, whether it's water rates, electric rates, or what have you. But unfortunately, it's the necessity of keeping your infrastructure or being sustainable within your organization and your infrastructure. So I know we saw a public, invited, public hearing, but if you look at it in that sense, and you break it down by if a person now is going to use 5,000 gallons, they, the old structure was from 0 to 2,900, was $1.79. It's going to go up to 5,000 gallons, it's going to be 2.25. It's not that much money. We also ask as council that for those seniors that need assistance, as we do with electric, that they, you guys will look at this as well, and y'all have told us that. So I'm just getting that information out there. It's been heard before. There you go.
Counselwoman Levison?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just also want to point out, there's a, there's a concept in industry called reliability centered maintenance. The idea is that you replace it when you need to, you don't ask any questions, and you do it before it fails. And exercising this concept is very important to these type of services, and I really, I really think we need to move this forward. And unfortunately, everybody sitting on this panel pays those rates, too. So it's like, we're increasing our own, so, I mean, it's not like we're just doing this to other people, so.
Well, I can personally say that I think the water line on our block on Columbia Drive has broken probably four or five times over the last four or five years. In fact, it was just a couple of months ago, there's a water line break, floodwater coming down the street. So now I'm going to open up the public hearing on ordinance 2015-09 and 010. Anybody from the public would like to speak at this time?
Jeff Thompson, 1616 Somner Street. Just hearing the people that I consider to be the heroes of Longmont, that you can tell they're, they're obviously very well-educated and intelligent and articulate, and they could be doing other things, selfish things, and instead, they're choosing to work for the Our Center. And hearing them talk about people that can't pay their utility bills and can't pay their rent, it's immoral that we have these problems. And the problem is, is this city council needs to raise its sense of morality. It should be illegal to shut off somebody's utilities. Those are just things everybody has a right to, just like they have a right to live. And if they've got the money, and they won't pay, there's other ways to get the money from them. You don't need to shut off their utilities. If you're shutting off people's utilities, it's because you are immoral. And this whole thing about the rate increase, it's a total lie. I went through all the communications and looked at all the numbers, and they're completely inadequate. It's a complete lie that you're being fed. I gave, you each got a copy of this, and it's got some questions, and we'll just start, start with this. Please answer these questions tonight before you vote on this. And then I'll follow up with, probably with a letter to the editor to show you how stupid this is. The first question is simply, how much is for increasing raw water supply? And what are we increasing the raw water supply from what to what? What is our gallons per capita per day, system-wide? What is the population that corresponds to our raw water supply goal? How much is for increasing water treatment capacity, from what to what? And when will you revise the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan for the increased population that you need to support this? The reason the rate, the reason we can't, the books don't balance, is because our use of water hasn't gone up. We're not selling as much water, so we have to raise the rates. And that's because we have overcapacity, both in terms of water supply and water treatment capacity. And so what is Mr. Dominguez's solution to that? It's to increase the capacity. So you'll have to increase the rates even more. A 53% increase in what is a necessity to stay alive? And when you get to the end of that in 2019, you're going to have to, to make it 100% increase, this is theft.
Thank you. Counselmember Vagely?
Oh, we're still public?
Oh, yeah. Is there anybody else from public, you're right, that would like to speak on this issue at this time? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Counselmember Vagely?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just, I've got a couple of quick questions for staff. A member of our public called you out, so I figured I'd give the opportunity to respond. A few just quick, quick questions. What? Number one, how much, we're raising the fees, if we vote and pass this, so how much of these fee increases are going to be used for increasing the raw water supply?
Mayor Coombs and Members of Council, Dale Rademacher, General Manager from Public Works and Mother Natural Resources. So the first question is, how much is? So the first question is, how much is used for increasing raw water supply? I, I, I think he means how much is, is that? As we've talked with you about that, the, the main water supply project that we are looking at is the Windy Gap permitting project, and we will be talking with you about that this week, this, this year, um, as that project continues to move into the permitting phase. The costs for that are, are in the range of fifteen to twenty million. Um, and again, it's gonna depend on what level of capacity the council ultimately decides that we should, um, participate in.
Are these fees for increasing capacity, or are they for existing infrastructure, or both?
The fees are all based on the Integrated Tree Water Master Plan that we presented to council back on September sixteenth of two thousand fourteen, along with slideshow. And I would encourage members of the public to watch that slideshow and to look at that video, because that's the detail, uh, where everything is grounded. And if you'll recall, that's when we identified that we have about a two-hundred-million-dollar capital need over the next twenty years that needs to get funded. The bulk of that cost, uh, is in the infrastructure to renew and, uh, and, and maintain our existing system. And I'm off the top of my head, but I think somewhere in that twenty-year time period, it's somewhere in the range of about seventy million for expansion in the areas of the Windy Gap project, expanding the Nelson Flanders Treatment Plant, and adding treated water storage to the system.
And then what happens, I guess the next question is, uh, what is the population that corresponds to our raw water supply goal?
And, and did you not want to answer number two?
I couldn't read GPS. I don't know what that means.
That's gallons per capita per day.
What is our current gallons per capita per day, system-wide, you know?
It's about one-seventy.
One-seventy?
Hundred-and-seventy gallons per capita per day.
Okay. And then what will, how will that increase with the new ratings?
It's actually decreasing. Our gallons per capita per day usage is decreasing over time, has been decreasing. I expect it will continue to decrease to some level where it will plateau or continue to decrease. Um, I don't see anything that's gonna cause the per capita number to increase. Uh, the third question was the population, and essentially, that's the build-out of the city. I believe the population build-out right now is around a hundred and twelve, a hundred and thirteen thousand range. Um, and that is what we are designing systems to serve, um, as we always have. The, the Tree Water Plast, Master Plan is intended to support the ultimate development of the comprehensive plan for the city.
And then how much, uh, how much of the rate increase is going to be used for increasing water treatment capacity?
So the water treatment capacity is being done in a staged effort at the Nelson Flanders Treatment Plant. Um, it's to add it in fifteen million gallon increments, but with, with that first fifteen million gallon increment happening somewhere between two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty-four, but you need to start planning and designing and, and actually starting construction in order for that to come online in that timeframe. The second fifteen million gallons would come online later, um, again, depending on what our build-out demands are. Our intent is to not build excessively ahead of the demands that we are actually seeing.
Okay. And then finally, just, I guess, this is a good question, I'd like to know the answer to. So currently, there's a Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan, and I assume that these changes and whatnot will continue to be revised with time, over time?
That's in the process.
All that stuff?
Well, that's in the, we're in that process right now as we speak, and that's the, the project that Joni and Aaron are working on, um, that we talked about at the end of, um, last year, and they're in the process of getting that ready to go now.
And when will, when will we expect to see that revised LACP?
What's the timeframe, Joni? Twenty sixteen? Beginning of two thousand sixteen.
Okay. Do you have anything else you want to add, Dale? No? Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Um, again, no one likes to raise rates. I have a question for you, Dale. No one likes to raise rates, but it's a necessity that I would really hate to see a water system completely go down without it having, replacing some things that are, uh, some items in infrastructure that are very old. I move ordinance two thousand fifteen dash zero nine.
Okay, let's vote on two thousand fifteen zero nine. That passes seven to zero.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And then I would move ordinance two thousand fifteen dash ten.
I'll second that.
The, the, the only other comment that I have is that I have not heard of folks getting their utilities cut off, whether it's water or electricity, unless it's for an egregious amount of non-payment. We work with the residents of the city of Longmont, whether, one, if you're a senior citizen, or you're average Joe citizen. We've worked with residents in this community since I've been on council, and even before I was on council. So, um, a, again, as much as it pains to raise rates on myself and others, this is a necessity of, of life.
Okay, let's vote. That's a seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is the consent agenda. Item nine A is two thousand eleven, two thousand fifteen eleven. A bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January first, two thousand fifteen. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for February tenth. Item nine B is two, ordinance two thousand fifteen twelve. Um, an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of all Wrights' Way and easements dedicated on the homestead at Harvest Junction Final Platte recorded in Boulder County at reception number two eight nine seven three nine eight, generally located south of State Highway one nineteen and east of Main Street. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for February tenth. Item nine C is ordinance two thousand fifteen thirteen. A bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of two thirty-foot-wide access easements adjacent to Sedgwick Court, Sedgwick Court and the Somerset Meadows subdivision, generally located east of Sedgwick Court and south of Heather Hill Circle. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for February tenth. Item nine D is ordinance two thousand fifteen fourteen. A bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the following parcels of real property at the Bensbrand Municipal Airport. Hanger, H twenty-eight B to Diamond G Concrete Company, H twenty-eight C to Jerry C Dust, H twenty-eight D to Greg Stewart, H thirty-one C to Richard Hall, H thirty-one A to Robert Yerback, H twenty-eight E to David Fries, H thirty-one B to Carl Harris, H twenty-eight F to Art Encherico, H six, H seven, H eight, H nine, and H ten to Robert Sarjé and Ronald Vogel, and H fifty-eight to Doug Lyle, and H thirty-two C to David Schink. This, um, public hearing and second reading of this ordinance is scheduled for February tenth. Item nine E is resolution two thousand fifteen three, a resolution of the city of Longmont approving intergovernmental agreement between the city and Colorado State Forest Service for grant funding for forest stewardship activities at Button Rock Preserve. Item nine F is resolution two thousand fifteen oh four, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Colorado Water Conservation Board for grant funding to restore the St. Ring Creek on the Peshawl Open Space. Item nine G is resolution two thousand fifteen oh five, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and city of Boulder for its childcare services program. Nine H is resolution two thousand fifteen oh six, approving the intergovernmental agreement, um, intergovernmental Colorado firefighter heart and circulatory benefits trust agreement between the city and several Colorado municipalities to provide benefits to its firefighters. Item nine I is resolution two thousand fifteen oh seven, approving the services contract between the city and the Longmont Cable Trust. Item nine J is accept three capital improvement project amendments as approved by the city manager. Item nine K is approve one capital improvement program amendment. Um, and item nine L is to designate the bulletin boards outside the council chambers and the west entrance on the civic center as the official city council agenda posting locations. Staff does not need to pull any of these items.
Councilmember Santos?
If no one has anything to pull off, I move the consent agenda.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote.
Sweet. Yeah. I think that's a first.
Mayor Coombs, your first item on general business is the Bowes Annexation Referral, and Eva Pajewski is here to introduce this item.
Good evening, councilmembers. Eva Pajewski, Planning and Development Services. This is an annexation referral request for a property, uh, in southwest Longmont at eight seven seven five Craig Road. It is, uh, south of the Park Meadows property, which you approved rezoning for this evening. It is directly south of that property. Uh, so it is, uh, south of Nelson, and it would be, um, east of Airport Road. Um, it's about nine acres, uh, and, um, for referral, obviously, um, this is, doesn't constitute approval of an annexation. This is, um, them requesting, uh, your ability to, them, their ability to file an application for annexation. They submitted a concept plan. Um, it's very, uh, basic, um, and so I know that the developer is working through that, and I believe that if, if they are allowed to file an annexation application, that concept plan will be a little more detailed and refined. Uh, the applicant is also here tonight, and, um, will also be able to make a brief presentation, so if I'm available for any questions, or, um, the applicant can also speak as well. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? Yeah, please make your presentation. Thank you.
You would think I'd know better. Uh, Mayor Coombs, fellow councilmembers, Carl Nelson, um, applicant for, actually, the applicant for the property is Jack Bowes, who is in the, uh, back of the room at this point. We're really excited tonight. Uh, we've looked at both this parcel and the Park Meadows parcel, and really considered those parcels to, uh, require a builder to go along with the parcel, to develop the parcel. Uh, we think that, uh, uh, the parcels themselves will be product-specific, given the overall size. As, as you know, we are a local master plan developer that has done things in Longmont, and has done things in, in other, uh, parts of, uh, the Metro Denver area. And with this parcel, we've, uh, partnered with Dreamfighters Homes, who is out of Jacksonville, Florida. Dreamfighters Homes is currently the nation's fastest-growing building, and they have looked at Colorado and looked at coming into Colorado to start a home-building operation. And they identified Longmont as being, as they've looked at through all the demographics. I think this is pretty exciting for Longmont in general, certainly exciting for, uh, these two parcels, but said, out of all of Colorado, where we want to start is, uh, Longmont, and specifically, uh, southwest Longmont. And as such, if you look at the southwest Longmont corridor in general, um, what they have, uh, committed on these parcels is to potentially hit a price point that may be lower than some of the, uh, uh, price points in that area in general. As, as you guys probably know better than I do, uh, if you look at Meadow Mountain, and you look at Renaissance, uh, Meadow Mountain is Richmond American Homes or MDC Homes, and Meritage Homes is selling out of Renaissance, they are touching in the north of five-hundred range at this point for a, a single-family detached home. And in large part, that's due to the general education of, of the consumer there, and, and they're large-part engineers that are, are coming from that corridor in there. But nonetheless, uh, wanted to briefly touch base, uh, about our excitement with, uh, Dreamfighter Homes, and, uh, introduce Ryan McGreen. Uh, we've been before you guys many times at this point. Uh, Ryan McGreen is our planner, or, or the partnerships planner, uh, currently for the project. And then Todd Johnson is here, and Josh Lewis is here with Dreamfighter Homes. And so with that, we'd like to turn it over to, uh, Ryan McGreen, who will give the presentation for this piece. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, and councilmembers.
Thank you, Carl.
Good evening. Ryan McGreen, North Design, eleven oh one Banning Street, Denver, Colorado. There we go. I thought I was gonna have to wing it and explain and draw, use my hands and draw pictures in the sand, but, uh, I want to be real brief. We've been here, we, everybody's been here for a long night. I know you guys are used to these long nights, but I'm not. So, uh, apologize for that. Um, everybody's version is a little bit different. Um, I'm gonna skip through this early thing. I think everybody's familiar with where the Bowes property is, just in the south of Park Meadows we just talked about. I just want to get up, we don't want to beat a dead horse, everybody's, everybody kind of knows it's gone here, but we just wanted to raise the point that we're here tonight to talk about, you know, free, that freestanding looks kind of goofy, what's going on there, but we wanted to show that there's thought put into it, that we, the intention is for that, that Park Meadows parcel and the Bowes parcel to be developed, maybe not simultaneously just due to the entitlement process, but it'll become together as a master plan simultaneous community for this portion. Um, just to kind of give you a little more context, uh, the shaded area is areas in the, um, Boulder County unincorporated parts of Longmont, so you can see that it's right adjacent to several sides to, um, the existing city of Longmont. Um, and then this is basically the two concepts put together, um, to kind of show how they're gonna go together. The house at the bottom of the Bowes property is intended to stay. Um, I believe Mr. Bowes is gonna, intending to live there for the near term. Um, so the development will consider that, and what's likely to happen is that, um, Dreamfighter Homes will come forward with the rezoning approval tonight for the northern property. We're gonna start looking at concept plans, um, further refining concepts, and come in with the PvP application and preliminary plat. And then, assuming that we get your go-ahead tonight, we'd come in with a zoning and an annexation application as well for the Bowes property and move those through. Uh, so probably going forward, the north parcel will be known as Phase One, the south parcel will be Phase Two, and ideally, when it's all said and done, it'll look like one cohesive development in this part of the, so we think it's a great opportunity, a great piece of property. Um, there's kind of higher density in the city of Longmont, in the west, lower density in Boulder County, and the, to the east, be a great transition piece between the two. So, like I said, I wanted to keep it short and brief, hopefully I didn't talk too quick. If you have any questions, happy to answer anything. Like you said, the whole team's here, and I look forward to kind of bringing the project forward, and you guys get to see more of it as it comes. Thank you.
Any questions?
Councilmember Anderson?
I know that's probably not the intention, but, um, you know, when I hear that you're looking at a price point lower than five-hundred-thousand dollars, um, you've heard a lot tonight about the need for affordable housing, so while it may not reap you large, um, financial, um, gains, it would be, um, lovely if you would build for people that are first-year teachers making thirty-seven or forty-thousand dollars a year. And, um, you know, so I'm just throwing it out, you've heard a lot of it, and so it would really be nice if we could see some low, some of the, the basic housing prices that, um, you know, the regular working people, I mean, probably people that'll be in your construction crews could afford.
If you don't mind, real quick, Josh Lewis, Dreamfighters Homes, just, uh, so we're clear on that, the actual price point is gonna be mid-three-hundreds starting, and that is actually our direction with coming into Longmont, is we've done lots, extensive research, basically, looking at the rental market versus somebody who has the opportunity to actually own their first home. And you're really looking at the five-hundred mark, as you just said. So we're looking to come in mid-three-hundreds, or fifties in that area, and get teachers, firefighters, so forth, nurses, a chance to get into a home like that, and then go to their second home, hopefully.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I don't have a question, so, uh, option one does not, again, um, authorizes the application and finding annexation would be of interest. Referring the application does not obligate the council to approve annexation. Right, Ava? Okay. So I move option one.
Okay.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. That passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your final item tonight is the council's contingency discussion. Jim Golden will, um, take this in.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, I'm Jim Golden, Director of Finance, and, uh, we're here to discuss the city council contingency. Uh, wanted to point out that the city charter does call for, um, the ability to have a contingency, uh, in the general fund from year to year. And when, uh, we don't have to have it, but it is, uh, spelt out there that it's able to be done, and, uh, when it is there, um, use of the dollars in the contingency have to be done based on approval of the city council. So, year after year, for quite a while now, we've been putting about sixty thousand dollars in the annual budget for the city council's, uh, contingency. And, uh, from year to year, we've had a different amount of usage, varying amounts, and so we've ended some years with unused balances in the council contingency. Staff has typically checked in with the council and asked about the, uh, usage of those dollars, and in, uh, the most recent years, the council has directed us to, to carry those dollars over and add them into the next year's balance. So, so currently, at the end of two thousand and fourteen, the balance that was remaining was sixty-two thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars. As you're aware, I did, um, by email- As you're aware, I did by email suggest that we could continue to carry it over. And since we had a varying amount of responses to that, started bringing it to council for consideration. So we have a few options on this agenda item that we brought to you for consideration to use, to do with those dollars, in the sense of how to handle them at the end of First would be, again, as we have in the past, roll it over into 2015's contingency. Second option would be to move it into the general fund emergency reserve. As you know, and we gave you information in the communication about our reserve policy and our goal to increase that emergency reserve. We, with this year's budget, are moving to a emergency reserve balance of about $3.8 million. And our goal there is closer to 5.1 or greater. And then finally, the third option was to move it into the reserve for council one-time, which has, was established a few years back with some dollars that we had significant amount of dollars that came back to the city that the council, prior council wanted to set aside. And we use that from time to time on some one-time type projects. There's no balance remaining in there currently, but that's another opportunity for where those dollars could be put. So with that, not asking about, you know, what specifically we should use the dollars on, what we're doing is asking to give us direction on, you know, where it should go for 2015.
Councilmember Anderson?
Actually, I read this is that we could engage in a discussion about using the funds as well, if we would choose to do that. And because I wanted to have our discussion open and in the meeting, I did send a memo to the city manager and the two assistant city managers, as well as Mayor Coombs, with a couple of ideas that I had. And I would just like to present them to council. I think that you've heard from a couple of community members about the Leadership Fellows program at the Community Foundation serving Boulder County. This program is quite a bit different than the Leadership Longmont program. And I've had the opportunity to present and attend a couple of the sessions. And what I found remarkable is that of the 25 fellows this current year, 10 of them are from Longmont. And Boulder County commissioners are putting in funds to support this program. And the city of Boulder Chamber of Commerce is also collaborating. And Mr. Potato, who we've heard from and who's still in the audience, is a fellow from this year's class. I think that we've had extensive discussion among ourselves and publicly at council about how we want to raise the image and build relationships regionally. And this program, I think, if we would sponsor three specific scholarships or target three openings for Longmont people in the next iteration of the class, which begins this May, we could go along to build a lot of leadership potential, plus networking across the county on some of these very important issues that they discuss, economic development, transportation, and other things. And I think that we've been dealing with this image of we need to get outside of Longmont and build respect. And I think the way you do this is one-to-one. So my recommendation would be to devote $3,600 of the 2014 contingency fund towards Leadership Fellows. The other two items, Mr. Potato presented information about the Latino Chamber of Commerce, need for some support for their office. I know that Advance Longmont has a lot in it about collaboratively working with our ethnic and minority business community. And I also want to note that the Latino Chamber, outside of the city, being a member of the chamber, has not come to us to ask for any support or any other funds. And we understand what it would really mean to them to have a real place in the community. The other two items would be responding to community needs. We heard so much about how people didn't want us to spray four mosquitoes when we found West Nile. So my suggestion would be to devote a portion of the money to extra amount of larvicide this spring and continuing to kill pre-emergent mosquitoes, as well as to try to address the emerald ashbore beetle. Again, last year, when we were considering the budget, that study and survey in Boulder where they found some concentrations had not been completed. And I've been speaking with our city forester, and we need to ramp up a little bit to prepare for what could be coming this season in Longmont. So my suggestion would be to give staff direction for $3,600 for the fellows program, perhaps $20,000 that could be split at their discretion, larvicide and emerald ashbore beetle, and then $20,000 to Latino Chamber.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess my question, I have a question that's one of point of order. And that is, we voted on this because I know, because I was the lone vote that said that we shouldn't have a council contingency fund. There was a motion and we voted saying that it should be put towards the reserve, $62,000 to the reserve. I mean, I'd love to have the vote again, but I remember us having a conversation, we're gonna take the $60,000, start over, and the $62,000 was gonna go to the reserve fund for the city. Am I, did I dream this?
So, Mayor Coombs, members of council, I think that was the remaining balance of one-time dollars that we had programmed for 2015 that we needed to make decisions on for use. So that was budgeted dollars for 2015.
Okay, all right.
So this is carryover from 2014's contingency.
Same, same, okay, all right. So with same arguments, no, and especially on, I mean, I fully support the Latino Chamber. And any other night, I'd be like, yeah, sure, let's talk about that. I think we need to look about what we're gonna do to how to help you, Mr. Potato. However, tonight, we just gave a pretty big hit to people. And a lot of the, I mean, if I were sitting here and I'm gonna read the paper in the morning, I'm gonna want to know, well, how careful of our, why are we raising water rates when we're just giving away money like this? I mean, I wish we had the $60,000 back that we gave to Tinker Mill. I mean, we have to show some financial restraint. I think that we need to tighten our belts and put the money back in the reserve and continue like we always do.
I've got a question on larviciding. It seems like we're already doing everything we can, you know, the problem really isn't, the problem against all of money, it's 12 county not larviciding. Is that the main problem, or?
Well, you know, if we go back to the discussion on mosquitoes, I think that is part of the issue, is that there are bodies of water that are outside of our boundary that we don't treat, where that comes into play. We are currently on a seven-day larviciding cycle, and they have been examining the cost of moving to a five-day larvicide cycle. We're not sure what that cost is and how that fits into the budget, but moving from a seven-day to a five-day, there could be additional costs associated with that.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. We just went on to the discussion of spending $60,000. The larvicide, you know, what we can do is put this money into council contingency or split some of the money off into the reserve fund. It's my understanding that, Harold, we had a brief conversation before the council meeting regarding the Latino Chamber. If we were to do this, would this be some kind of contract with them, as we do with the LAUC? Sean, you, you're looking at your head.
My recommendation is that if council chose to do that, is that there would be some kind of contract. And again, this is subject to council policy direction. But if you directed it, that there would be a contract where there would be some consideration that would come into play.
So we would be getting services, or they would be helping us with services?
I think you would, I think you would need to put something like, yeah, where you have the consideration and we get services as a result of that cost.
Sure.
Just to give some clarity to the discussion that Jose and I have been having with regard to this, we have talked about, again, not having a funding source, but we have talked about having a contract, similar to the contracts that we have with LAUC, SBDC, and others, where the Latino Chamber would commit to a number of things. One is helping us develop the kind of leadership pipeline into our board of commissions, into the leadership programs, like what Sarah mentioned, and other things that are called for in Advance Longmont, Pearl, even our local chamber, Longmont Chamber, Leadership Longmont, et cetera. And that they could potentially administer a grant, again, similar to what LAUC is doing for the LUGI grants and all the grants that we're the bank, but they simply bring us the candidates, vet them, and then refund their membership and participation into that. And so Jose has agreed to, I think, most of these things, he can argue with me if I'm wrong, committing to at least six networking opportunities in Longmont. And then partnering with LAUC, the new small business person that you met today, to conduct, you know, 10 to 20 personal outreach visits with LAUC to promote the grants and the other services that are being provided to small businesses, and specifically to Latino-owned or serving businesses. And then last but not least is sponsoring professional development opportunities, such as the expo that they already do, but also an additional professional development opportunity in Longmont. So we've agreed to some terms, but again, we haven't identified a funding strategy.
Right. And I'd really like to separate the Latino Chamber, not in this discussion.
Yeah.
I'd rather have that after this. So in my sense, and with respect to Tinker Mill, we, well, we gave them $60,000 and I had heartburn doing about doing that. We are getting some great services and I've heard nothing but wonderful things coming out of Tinker Mill. And so that's an investment that is a one-time investment, and I ask, you know, Mr. Converse, one time, that's it, as far as I'm concerned. But with this, I, what I would move, and I'll make the motion, is to move this into the remaining funds into council contingency fund. That's motion. So, and then we can have the discussions regarding larviciding at another date when we get a little bit more information. I know, I'd really like to have the BEA look at, Board of Environmental Affairs look at, you know, we had a presentation when I was liaison. There should be another presentation for mosquito abatement. And then with the trees, I'd like to get, with the ash, I'd like to get more information regarding that at a council, at a council meeting.
So just to be clear, your motion is to move it to the council contingency fund and not to move it to the reserve council one-time?
That is correct.
Okay.
Contingency. And then we can have the discussion.
Right.
But we don't, it's still 60 grand, right?
Yeah.
Still have 60 grand for 2015's budget.
Right, that's true.
Councilmember Anderson?
So what our amount in our council contingency would be, the 122, 157. You know, council members, we did have some brief discussion around spending this money at the end of the year. And I really think that I, my suggestion on both larvicide and the emerald ashbore issue was to devote, dedicate some money so the staff could develop a plan and see how many resources would be used and get working on it. Because when we're looking at our timeline for things on council, similarly with the Latino Chamber request, and the real-time critical issue is this Leadership Fellows program, the applications are due March 2nd. These are all timely things. And I think that, you know, we've been able to think about this for a while, and I think we need to take some action tonight. And so I will support this motion, but I do want to have a discussion tonight to give some direction for spending the money, some of it, tonight.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I don't think we need to spend it tonight. And I have some concerns about putting money towards a leadership program. There are literally hundreds of leadership programs across the state. And to single out this one without more information, for me, would be premature. I need more data. I need to know more about it. Also, on these other issues, to work out a contract with the Latino Chamber needs to be done before we just give them money. And we need to know more about what the city has already planned for the larviciding and what that will cost in real dollars, rather than just throwing money at it. I don't like to throw money at things. I want data, and I want to know exactly what we're gonna get for our money. So that's the reason I'll be supporting this motion.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess, I guess in theory, I think the motion, I think the motion, I mean, we can always choose to put it back in the reserve fund, you know. So if it passes, I'm not gonna, you know, be, you know, getting tired with it. Not gonna be heartbroken, but I'm gonna vote against it, hoping that in the next vote, we can vote to just push it into the reserve fund. And then we'll still have $60,000. We can still go ahead and work with the Latino Chamber to figure out, you know, what can be done there, and then we can get our data, et cetera. It's just that, again, I've said it before, I think this is how, this is right here where political work starts. Because I think it's a good policy to let the people who run our city and our finance department bring forward ideas that we vet. And we do have an annual budgetary, you know, an annual budgeting process. But then if we're just given $122,000, we're gonna give it away for political reasons. It looks good that we're gonna donate to the Latino Chamber. It's gonna look good that we're supporting a leadership program. And I think that should get out of our hands. I think there should be a process. Just giving away money, especially when we raised water rates like this, I think is just bad form. And so I'm hoping we're just gonna, you know, put that 62 grand into the reserve fund and put it in the cookie jar, so that in the future, we can use it for things that we really need.
Okay, we've got a motion. It's been seconded. Okay, that passes five to two with Councilmember Bagley and Mayor Coombs descending.
Mayor, if I could just add what we propose to do, when we bring our financial policies to you each year during the budget process, we're going to propose a financial policy on this issue about what to do with remaining carryover balance. And we're gonna use what you directed us tonight to be that financial policy. Now, you could change that policy in the fall if you want, but given that this is the direction so far, we'd kind of like to make it so we don't have to have this discussion every year, unless you really want to. So, thanks.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move to direct staff to provide additional information to council as quickly as we can get it on the Boulder Community Foundation Leadership Fellows Program, and then information on larviciding, ashbore beetle, and to see how quickly we could move on getting a, whether we call it a memorandum of understanding or contract for services with the Latino Chamber, so that they can get moving on having a space and being able to operate out of it. You know, when you, when you have an opportunity to get a space and you don't quite have the money, it does mean something to be able to get started on it at the beginning of the year, so that you can start doing the programming. I think if we delay on getting some assistance to Latino Chamber, then we disable them from doing the kind of work that they're on this trajectory. So while some people may consider this some political move, I have been devoting a number of hours every month over the last maybe six years, going to Latino Chamber board meetings, going to events, and it has not been for some political motivation. It's just that we need to nurture every aspect of our business community here, as well as the fact that every time we've asked Latino Chamber to step up with work on Advance Longmont, on doing things for the city to participate, planning events, reaching out, including people of all types of business owners, they have stepped up to the plate and asked for nothing. And I think that this is a critical moment for the city to give them some support when they need it. they need it.
Councilmember Santos?
I'm waiting for a second.
Okay, I second it.
Actually, point of order.
Councilmember Santos?
No.
You're not, please.
Get him the horn off.
Yep, I got it.
Councilmember Bagley?
It's late, I don't have my little book with me, but it was a compound motion, meaning that there's, you moved that we voted.
Staff to do three things.
Right. And so my thing is, I'm saying that we need to separate the three. So I'm just saying that let's take them one at a time, so that, because I'd vote for some and I wouldn't vote for others.
Do you want to do it that way, Mayor?
Uh, yeah, I can do that.
Then let's do it one at a time. You want to start, Mayor?
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I've waited my turn. I think that's probably the best thing to do, whereas Latino Chamber has time constraints, but I would like to see some sort of contract that needs to be passed. I'm not willing to say yes, write a check for $20,000 tonight. I want to see something at the next council meeting with a contract attached to it. Potentially, you've got seven days. Or within a reasonable time, I know they're under a time constraint. I have, yeah, we already have our packets, thank you. But that I, that I would agree to, that is probably, again, the concept that, you know, we're raising rates on water, I understand, but that's a different fund, and it's an enterprise fund, that we can't take water money and spend it on police. Same thing with the new broadband fund. It's an enterprise fund. It's got to sustain itself, and we can't just go dipping into it whenever we need money. So if I heard it right, we're going to separate all three, because it was, you know, I've said this many times, Councilmember Levinson, if you just do one at a time, there are some, just like Councilmember Bagley said, I would vote for, and there are some that I just would not vote for. Staff, as far as the larvicide and the trees, that needs to come back with information about, you know, about how things are going to be done, because I guarantee you, having been staff, we can, we can find ways, as we were doing tonight, we can find ways to spend money all the time. And some not so good. And so what I would like to see, again, the contract come back, and eventually, when we do our contract to services, if they're going to continue that, to bring that in as well. And I think that would be really good.
Well, originally, what, my understanding, what Sarah was asking for was just information back on three things, not that we were committing on three things, it was just giving us information. But we can take those requests to get information one at a time, so.
Do you want to do that?
You go ahead.
Thank you. I, I move to...
I don't believe you need to yank another motion, you just need to separate all four of those things.
Right, so we're going to, well, I think it was just three, I combined the West Nile and Emerald Ashbore as a unit. It was a unit. Those two were a unit.
What two are a unit?
The West, no, the West Nile, the West Nile, well, the larvicide for mosquitoes and the Emerald Ashbore beetle.
Two different things.
Fine, so we'll take, so which one do we want to do first, folks? Let's do the Latino Chamber first, let's feel good about something. Okay. So I would like to, so we're going to just direct staff to explore and bring back information.
Okay, I'll second that. Okay, great, we'll just vote on one at a time. Councilmember Santos?
For clarity, this is regarding the $20,000 of their request.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, let's get it clear.
Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Okay.
Councilmember Levinson?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to vote next on exploring, supporting, and sponsoring three people from Longmont to participate in the Boulder, the Community Foundation Serving Boulder County Leadership Fellow Program. And I would like to get some data back. I think that Josie Heath's already given us some, but I would like to get some information presented to the council about how that would look.
Okay, let's vote on that.
Point of order, a second can't vote against. That's where I've always been taught. What is it? The council member that seconded to vote against, I've always, what do you mean? Okay.
The person who makes the motion can't vote against it, but the second can.
I've always heard the second can't vote against it as well.
Okay, that passes six along with Councilmember Finley.
Okay, I'll take it to the clerk. I didn't have any turn, so.
You have Robert's rules in your pocket, don't you?
I left it at the office. Yes, I do.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess, I voted for that because I wanted to support you, Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you.
No problem. But we also need to be careful as we're going forward here, the, we're assigning our staff to do work.
I would be happy to help.
That, that, yeah, yeah. So my only concern is that, as we're moving forward with this stuff, that somebody in this room, or somebody, you guys are going to have to do this, and so...
I can connect him with the person I can provide the money.
Right, so I'm just saying that, yeah, there's a lot of things that we're wanting to do right now.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, here's the heartache, is that, as Councilmember Bagley says, we're assigning staff issues that they weren't planning, and getting out, without really any hard discussion about, does council really want to consider this? So it's just, I mean, we've been here for a good 30 to 45 minutes.
Wondered not.
Well, on this topic, but I mean, it's, again, I don't, I don't have a problem with getting information, but I don't think it's a priority when we already have a program as far as larvicide. Can it be augmented to do more days, as Harold said? Yes, but again, need the data, but it just seems that these emails from Josie Heath and John Creighton all came today, that there was some predetermined notion that we were going to discuss divvying up cash tonight. And what I don't want to have happen is, next week, we have the next group that comes in and says, well, you got a hundred and, $100,000, I want to chuck it at that as well, because that's what we do, that's what happens at the end of the year. So I don't have a problem getting information, but it should not supersede anything the staff is currently doing. And that's what I'm afraid that is occurring as far as your requests for the, the trees and larvicide. The others, we can get information really quickly, doesn't consume a lot of staff time, it's more on the organizations, but it just seems that within the last 24 hours, I don't know what's going on behind the scenes, but money's being spent. Again, we, at least we've had a relationship with the Latino Chamber through Sean, and I do see that as a very legitimate request. The others that you're making, yeah, Councilmember Bagley said, micromanaging, I do see that, and that's what we have tried to avoid at council, but there are some on council that want to be involved in every department.
Councilmember Levinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, what I heard from Councilmember Finley's remarks, what I was reading into them, is that she would have liked more information. And so my understanding is that, now, Councilmember Levinson is one person, can't ask or direct staff that that's a formal council action, this is a regular formal council meeting, and we have in the past, you know, directed staff to bring us back information. I'm just following the normal process. And, you know, I am very happy, what my intention was, is to get some discussion around what are other needs and, and items that we could address and issues. And one of those things was what we heard last year about the number of mosquitoes, nuisance in West Nile, and that the public wanted us to look at more larvicide. So again, you know, we were supposed to have a discussion about where to put the money, but then we never did have the discussion about ideas of what we could do. And, you know, simply, it's a request for information, and I'm sure that, you know, on their own, you know, if staff would have thought of it, they, and gauged that other people in the community were interested, then they would have brought it forward. But I think we can initiate some of these things as well.
So Mayor, Council, if I can add, on the larvicide piece, we do have staff working on that.
Yeah.
Can we bring it in two weeks? Probably going to be difficult as they're pulling that stuff together. So I think my, my point on this, and it was kind of when I heard the contract, and the contract at the next meeting, that stuff is pretty difficult to pull together, you know, it just, it happened that Sean and the Latino Chamber were already having conversations on this piece, in terms of this other, not associated with the building, but associated with how we work together. This is another component, but to say, so the timing piece is very important to us, especially as we have staff working on different issues. And so I think that's the piece where you saw me visibly get anxious when I saw that, because that's what we actually have to work through, through staff. But there are certain pieces of this, we're actually in the middle of it right now, and we're just waiting on that information to come back. And as I indicated, we've done it seven days, we're looking at five days, and Kim and her staff are working on it. Is it ready now? No.
So my question on that is, let's say you determine that, yes, you want to go to five days, but that doesn't necessarily have to come from council contingency fund to make that move. I mean, is there other ways to pay for that?
No, it doesn't. I mean, so typically, when we look at these items, we will look at different components of this. And so in general, when I talk about cost recovery, we look at productivity improvements, cost reduction, cost effectiveness, and alternate revenues. So this would fall into one of the four categories as you look at this, but there are other options that we could look at. Would it help? Yes. But we don't know what that is at this point, and I think that's what we're saying, is we're, as staff, they're working on that. And I got that information at about eight during the meeting. So, you know, that's the piece that we have to work through.
I mean, the whole concept of larvicide, more, as aggressively as we can, is to try to eliminate the cost of spraying.
Right.
And so there should be savings on the other end, if we do as much, and where there is to.
I think what we're saying is, we don't know the answers to these questions now.
Right, okay, great. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. The, I guess the, part of the reason why I moved the point of, or the called point of order, was to get in line to separate these four, because I vehemently, you know, will support figuring out something for the Latino Chamber. I don't know about the leadership program, therefore I need information, you know, that's why I supported you on that. And then this motion, however, I think that for this and the next one, the, we're looking, I mean, there are areas that they're not policy. It's, I mean, the policy of the city is to make sure that we kill as much mosquitoes as possible, so we don't get West Nile and get sick. And we've got experts who go around and test and look into it, and it might sound good to say we want to give money to do more larvicide, but there are people that know that stuff. Same thing with the Emerald, or Emerald Ashbore beetle. You know, we have an arborist that every time he comes in and presents, I'm struck with his passion and knowledge of, of the vegetation throughout our fine city. And so I don't, I don't want to get involved in, in those aspects of city management. I do want the other two, because those are policy decisions, but I think that if staff wants to bring us information that says, hey, this is what we need to do, and it becomes a budgetary policy issue, I mean, I just don't think that we should get involved in the staff's decision. So the next two, I'm going to vote against.
Councilmember Levinson?
Thank you. And the reason to bring it up like this is the fact that in the past, we have been told by staff, such as Dan Wolford, that if we needed additional resources devoted to mosquito spraying, that the council contingency budget in the past has been one of those sources. And so part of my intention tonight is to broach that discussion, to let staff know ahead of time that we, that we see that as a viable option we'd be open to. And as far as the Emerald Ashbore, I had a conversation recently with the city forester, Ken Wicklin, and he alerted to me to really some, some serious concerns. And again, in my discussion with Harold today, you know, I was unaware that some of this was being worked on, but again, I'd just like to send the signal from council that we are interested in looking at different options to reinforce our policy around how we address these environmental, if you will, issues.
So specifically, if I can jump in on the Emerald Ashbore, there's approximately $60,000 that we have to deal, to deal with that issue. Obviously, we're watching what's happening in Boulder. I guess the unknown in that question is, and again, this is where more information's needed, when do we think it's going to hit here? We know that, you know, if you look at the history of this, it's going to hit here. We just, you know, the timing of this is a different piece, and honestly, there's, there's different conversations that we have, because the dollar value, when it hits, and, you know, it could be into seven digits. And so those are all pieces that we're trying to understand and really work on, and what we need to do. But there is currently $60,000 available in that piece. What we don't know is what do we need and when we need it, but again, that's information that we need to bring back.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the next piece, the larvicide. Okay, that fails with Councilmembers Moore, Bagley, Mayor Coombs, Santos, and Bonnie Finley descending.
And the last one is the Emerald Ashbore beetle.
And that also fails with Councilmember Moore, Bagley, Coombs, Santos, and Finley descending.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. That's no, it should not be read as an indication that I don't care about the Emerald Ashbore or mosquitoes. When those items are ready to come before council and have gone through Board of Environmental Affairs, I can't wait to see it, because I know, because I, well...
I can wait.
Well, I'd like to wait, but I want to see that information.
Okay, now it's time for final call, public invited to be heard, as everybody in the public, if you'd like to speak.
I just have to respond to what Gabe said about how the city doesn't shut off the utilities, poor people's utilities, unless it's really an egregious case, and they can pay, and they just don't want to pay. That is a total lie. Everybody knows Strider Benson is poor, and Strider Benson has stood right here and told this council that they have shut off his utilities because he couldn't pay his utility bill. And Strider Benson is one of my heroes, and there's no way he's a deadbeat, like Gabe Santos is making him out to be. The city shuts off people's utilities that are just helpless and can't pay. And what Strider said is that then to get your utilities reconnected, they charge you a $25 reconnection fee. He was up here. It's 39.
20.
Well, whatever. But Santos doesn't give a damn, because all he cares about are the elites in this city, the selfish people that just live for how much money they can make. And that's what this water rate increase is all about. And that's what this water rate increase is all about. The numbers don't lie. You found out what ga, gallons per capita per day is, and he said, uh, it should be about 170. It's his job to get that down to more like 160, but he doesn't want to do his job. So just use that number. Take 170 gallons per capita per day times 365 days per year, and you get a number, and you divide that number, uh, you want to turn this into, oh, well, you, then you multiply that number times the population, which he said would be no more than 113,000, and then you divide by 326,000 to get acre feet, because there's a little less than 326,000 gallons in an acre foot. And you'll come up with something, some population way over, um, well, what you'll come out with is, uh, I get screwed up on how this math works. But you play around with that math, and you will quickly see that you've been given a pile of lies by Mr. Dominguez and his staff person, ratamaker. And he said that Windy Gap is only going to cost 22,000, around 22,000. He needs 22,000 more, but he's already put away 20,000. I'll show you, it's in the environmental impact statement for the Windy Gap Birmingham project, what that project is going to cost. And it's going to cost Longmont, at our rate of participation, 40 million dollars. So he has hid, he has misappropri- 20 million, I mean.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak at final call? Public invited to be heard?
Uh, Russ Lyman, uh, 500 Lashley Street, Unit Number Four, Longmont. I want to go home just as much as everybody, but I thought I'd end on a positive note. I, uh, I rarely use, uh, I, I rarely pay attention to my snail mail, uh, paper mail. And, uh, recently, I, uh, was unaware that my credit card had changed its date, and I had therefore unable to pay without having proper dates. And lo and behold, when I thought I did check my mail, I found that, uh, Longmont had been trying, had been unsuccessfully trying to charge me for three months of electricity. But for three months, I had continued to receive electricity despite my, my lack of payment. I appreciate Longmont not shutting off my service, and I appreciate being able to come current with that account and, uh, return my service. I do recognize that electricity, water delivered to my home, and sewage moved from my home is not a human right. It is a human service. There's a big difference. Rights exist absent government, not because of government. So water and sewage are services the government provides because we as citizens agree to have been provided by the city. And I appreciate the city of Longmont providing those services, and I appreciate paying my taxes to have those services rendered. Thank you.
Uh, hello again. Uh, I just wanted to tell you that, um-
Just state your name and address for the official-
Yes, Jose Batida, uh, Latino Chamber of Commerce, 353 Main Street. And wanted to, um, congratulate you on just, I, not, just throwing the money at things is, it's, it's kind of irresponsible, so, uh, wanting to know a little bit more about something, I expected that. So I'm happy, uh, to craft an MOU, uh, with Sean, which I happened to, from the third row, see that he was already working on it. I didn't mean to use it up, but, uh, but I just wanted to tell you that, um, uh, investing on the Latino community is not an investment, uh, I mean, I'm sorry, it's not a political move, Brian. And, um, you're actually investing on a, on some, some, a service, a niche service that we're providing the whole county. Uh, most of the people being benefited being from Longmont. And by having an office, we're, we have that space to be able to, you know, provide a whole lot more than, than we've been able to before, uh, with our limited resources. And, and besides the things that, uh, Sean already mentioned that we would be able to do through the MOU, there's other things beyond that, that this is going to help us with, especially with, uh, being able to collect, um, metrics about, um, how many Latino businesses we have, and how many we've been able to serve, and how many we'll be able to serve in the future. And, I mean, there, there's so much more. We already have the ties to other organizations, um, where we have plans to be able to do a lot more, but we're sort of stuck right here because we don't have those resources. This opens up the floodgates for us to be able to do, you know, tremendous things, and we're ready. We're ready to take that next step, and, and I thank you for considering that. So thank you.
Okay, now it's time for Mayor and Council comments. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Um, just want to put in a plug for Long, Longmont, they're doing real well. They've rented out a lot of their desk space already. They're getting ready to remodel the second floor of the Times-Paul Building. So rather than have an empty shell of a building with no use to it, we have people actually working out there and creating companies. So I think that's a good thing for Longmont. Second thing I've got, um, last week's open forum kind of was, uh, spirited discussion, particularly around the chapter 1502 of the land use code, land development code, I'm After reflecting on my initial positions, especially on notice and appeal, I almost think we were developing a solution, looking for a problem. And with that in mind, I'm going to make a motion to restore-
Never talk about it again?
And never talk about it again. Restore the notice to 1,000 feet. Restore the appeals process to previous language while retaining the burden of proof to the appellant, and have the city attorney review appeals request and give feedback to the appellant.
Councilmember Finley?
Oh, I, I- We'll do this and then we'll- Oh, it's second out.
Okay, that's been, motion's been made, and it's been seconded by Pauline. Councilmember Christiansen?
Pardon? Oh. Oh, oh.
We're not voting. They just want you to turn your-
Oh, okay. I thought you were going to speak first.
I'm going to wait till this is over.
Councilmember Morrison? Sorry, no. You still have your, someone still got to-
Uh, I'm just asking a clarifying question. Um, Councilmember Moore, when you were talking, um, do you want to keep the appeals process, the new process as suggested, with the, uh, city attorney to review appeals prior to going to council?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I, I wholeheartedly endorse your, the spirit in which you're making this motion. However, um, I'm going to vote against it, because I think that the way it is right now seemed to have worked, and didn't kick up a lot of dust, and just things were working. And, uh, there's, I mean, there's a lot of, uh, very sensitive issues, including whether or not the city attorney should be the one, uh, you know, kind of looking over the appeals process, and so I, I, I'm going to vote against it, but I'm never going to vote on this topic. I'm, I'm going to vote against everything until it dies, a slow lingering death.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Uh, I'll, I'll support the motion, but I reserve judgment on, on whether or not that I, I would like to see both. The one, how it was going to be presented when we sent this to staff, and I'd also like to see what, what, uh, Councilmember Moore is suggesting. I like, I like to see comparison and get staff's interpretation of that comparison. And, um, you know, good legislation takes time, and sometimes sausage, but throwing this and throwing that in there, um, and sometimes political will for the good of all, whether you're for something or against something, if it's going to make this, uh, the city of Longmont a better place, then you got to take that in consideration. So sometimes votes are very difficult.
I guess my understanding was, um, there was a lot of good work that was done in the, the language, and a lot of good legal work, um, that I'm for. Uh, I guess the big heartache that people had was two issues. One, uh, who could appeal? And, you know, if we wanted to open that up to anybody, I'm fine with that, as long as the rest of stuff stays the way it was. Um, and the other thing was, who's the gatekeeper? Whether it's Eugene or whether it's staff, uh, I still think it's, um, the appellant is the one that needs to have the burden of proof before it comes to the city. So, um, and I, I guess I'm not hard over on 750 to 4,000. You know, either way, I think we did a lot to increase transparency when we included the renters in that, so, um, I- I guess I'm, I'm confused. I guess I'm not going to support it.
That's what I want to see later.
Yeah. Because I think that there's some, some good things that I don't want to throw out, just because, uh, people are afraid of change. You know, I think that if we can fix the, the two things that people were most concerned about in the change, I think we can still move forward with something that's quite a bit better than what we had before. So- Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I, uh, my thought on this is, I agree with, it's a solution looking for a problem. So that little piece of it that everybody's upset about, uh, I, I think if we leave it the way, that little piece of it, the way it is, that I would be more in favor of that. Um, and I, it's not that I don't think, your idea isn't something that could also work, but it is a solution looking for a problem. And so I think what I would rather do is have, take a look, have staff take a look at the way they originally wrote it, the way you're suggesting, and the way that it was when it comes to that piece. And let's have a discussion about that, and then let's vote on that.
Councilmember Morrison?
Thank you. Um, the things I can't support in this motion is, um, having the city attorney, um, uh, be the gatekeeper. Um, and, uh, you know, one of the reasons really is he's got the fiduciary responsibility to re, uh, represent his client, the city, and really not to help or represent the, the citizens necessarily, who might be the appellant's. Um, I also agree that there were good, um, changes, uh, such as including the renters, the 1,000 feet. I support, um, extending the notice to 1,000 feet, um, and also, uh, keeping the system where the applicant would have the burden of proof on appeal. Um, I just can't support the piece with, uh, city attorney reviewing appeals prior to council.
Okay, we've got a motion. It's been seconded. Okay, that, uh, fails with Councilmember Moore and Santos voting for it, and, uh, and everyone else voting against. Councilmember Morrison?
Mayor Coombs, um, let me suggest something. Um, the, uh, direction that council gave the last time was, um, we passed it on first reading, or we direct, we directed staff to bring it for first reading. So perhaps what we should do is leave that normal process, just maybe to let them have extra time, because I'm hearing from council members that we want a little bit different things than we normally see on front for its reading, and maybe allow staff to have a couple more weeks to bring something back to us, and with some additional information, um, and, uh, looking at things different ways, as council members have suggested.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Excuse me. It's getting late. So, so, so if I can help-
I'm getting tired.
-bring this together. So I think the, the issue is, is, is the chapter 15 is much broader than, than just this one issue.
Right.
And, and there are a number of things in, in terms of clarifying the code that, that we talked about. This is one piece. And what I've heard from council, and, and while council has not voted on this, but what I've heard is, the piece that is driving the, the heartburn, or, or the, in, the concern on this, is the ability for individuals to appeal, um, in, in terms of where it used to be, and in terms of what's happening now. And so council will remember, council directed staff to bring back the ordinance, saying that you have to be part of the process, request information, I'm not going to go into the details, um, in, in order to appeal. And so that's the council direction on the table right now. And, and, and that's the ordinance that we will bring back to council with that provision in it. But I'm also hearing council say concerns about this. And, and so we can bring it back and discuss it on first reading, or we can bring it back and council can give us direction on that piece, um, and, and we don't talk about the rest of the ordinance that's in play, which I think is essentially, I think, what was in, in, in the motion on that piece. But we're bringing this back to you, because there's other pieces in it, uh, that, that we need to talk about in terms of the broader code. And, and so the question is really, do we have the discussion in the first reading? Or do we bring it back as, as a discussion item, have the conversation, and then bring it back as a first reading with different direction from council?
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Before staff suggested that we change this, did we have any issue with this whatsoever?
What, what is this?
This, the, the proposed ordinance?
There, there were a number of issues and contradictions within the ordinance. There, there was clarifications that we needed to bring together. So that's what I'm saying, is there were definitely issues within the ordinance that we needed to, to, to consult-
But I think it's a good idea to have to make the sausage, as Councilmember Santos said, next time.
There's always first reading?
That's what I mean. I, 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 I think it's a good idea to bring it back on first reading, and we'll talk.
Councilmember Morrison?
Thank you, Mayor. And my request would be to bring it, I, like, give us some time to hash it out. The other thing I, that I do think we had one or two speakers, um, graciously suggest is that we should also look at the piece that for minor, um, uh, minor, uh, changes, subdivision changes, or whatever, that, um, we exempt on that piece too, because right now, um, they're very limited, um, appeal status. It's the applicant, the owner, you know, a gen, uh, minor, um, revisions, you know, have basically no public input. And certainly from, um, previous appeals, we've heard at council, some of the minor stuff actually has neighbors and community members very charged when it's infill development. And I think we could, um, really understand what the dynamics of that would be moving forward.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just want to mention my business of the week, because of course we must. Uh, there's a new art gallery in town, the Dark Room Art Gallery, at 5:15 May. The Dark Room will exhibit everything from oil paintings to sculpture, and of course, photography. Uh, I think it would be a fun thing to do any day of the week. Go downtown, go check out the Dark Room.
Councilmember Christiansen?
I thought we were all getting ready to go home. So anyway, um, so I think most of us are, um, aware that 70 years ago today, Auschwitz was liberated. And, um, I think it's really important that all of us never forget all the people who survived that, and that we never, we try to never again create a situation where people are separated by prejudice, and then segregated, marginalized, demonized, demonized, and then exterminated. separated by prejudice, and then segregated, marginalized, demonized, and then exterminated. And in the words of, I had the pleasure of getting to know a survivor of eight death camps, Walter Plawaski, who said, when I asked him about his desires for revenge, he said, "My revenge is that I'm still here, and I have children, and I have grandchildren, and I am still here." I think those are very wise words. Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And that's one of the things I was going to bring up today is UN Holocaust Remembrance Day, as well as some of the celebrations marking the 70th anniversary of the liberation of people forced to be in those camps. The other thing I would like to say about that issue is that, you know, the Holocaust in Europe was one thing, but we still have a potential for genocide for, in many different areas of the world now. We should all be aware and continue to inform ourselves of what's happening in the world. Recently, I, my husband and I have been revisiting an HBO series called Band of Brothers. And one of the last episodes is the 101st Airborne discovering Dachau. And it, very, very powerful, and the reaction is that they didn't understand really what it was. And I think it was inconceivable what happened, even though people had an inkling of what was going on, and that, you know, there was genocide much earlier in the 1900s against Armenians, and then to have it come again, and then genocide in Cambodia, just hoping that this is something that we don't visit upon our fellow man again, and work to prevent it. So thank you, everyone, for remembering.
City Attorney, any comments?
No comments, Mayor, council.
City Attorney, any comments?
No comments, Mayor.
This meeting is adjourned.